Good morning, Rick.
Good morning.
Recorder's on. Good morning Travis.
Good morning.
Recorder's on.
Okay.
Just tell me to tell you guys the recorder's on.
That's good to get it going, because sometimes that thing takes a while to warm up.
So, uh, so when somebody views it, they're gonna hear it. Right, uh, recorder. Jean's stuck in repeat.
Sorry, I've got my pen, I'm just, I don't know what we need.
Well, I got mine and my thing.
Okay, good gentlemen. Hey, um, Travis, we wanted to put on the agenda. Carmen's safety motion, per safety, and, um, this civic, civil papers, yes, right here. He's got it. This will be two motions from the sheriff's office regarding, uh, civil papers. They're upping the mileage, and they're upping the administrative fee, and then this per safety resolution.
Okay, this is called the civic, civil process, or?
Yes, it's a civil process, increased mile rates. And then these are the original, so, these are the ones I have to sign.
Okay.
Under other business?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, it's nine o'clock, I'll call the, uh, regular meeting of Mercer County Commissioner to order. Um, first up is the agenda. Um, we need to add, um, per safety, um, under other business, and then, uh, civil process rates under other business. Um, anything else to be added to the agenda?
Oh, civil process rates and what?
Per safety, uh, motion.
Isn't that already on?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
It's already on the North Dakota per safety plan, I think?
Oh, okay.
Right?
Same thing? Okay.
Uh, yeah, items under the highway department. Uh, those were initiated by me originally, uh, this, as far as I'm concerned, they both can be removed. I need to, uh, research that more, I have no time to do that.
Okay.
So, unless, unless, oh.
We, we had them tabled to this meeting, so we'd have to bring them up and then table them again. If, or, or, I mean, um, just because we had tabled them to this meeting, we have to at least hear them, but we can table them to another meeting.
I don't know the process and how we just, then, well, let's just vote them down then, at that point.
Okay, and then they can be brought up again.
Yeah, I can bring it up again later, okay.
Okay. Anything else?
So, I've got, I've got budget stuff, I want to talk about, I think that can go with the final budget approval.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
If anything, maybe we move the budget to last or something, after the hearing.
Yeah, we can always, we can always pause it.
Right.
And then resume it, so. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Jean, second by Jamie, to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Uh, we got three sets of minutes, let's do the September twentieth minutes first.
Any, oh, um, I have an addendum to the amount for the scoria. I guess from Leroy Fisher for the landfill. Um, two.
Two?
Yep.
Okay, what was it?
Um, four hundred dollars a load. Not a hundred.
How much?
Four hundred.
Four hundred, okay.
Yep, and that was found after the fact, so.
But at the meeting?
At the meeting.
At the meeting, I said a hundred, so I, I.
Okay, so what I want to do then is, yeah, when we're doing this, I'm gonna put it in these minutes that we found out four hundred, and then, okay, and then that way we've got it.
If the board's okay with that, then, yeah, that's fine, I just.
Yeah, I would agree with that, we'd have to.
Approve this, but then should I make a new motion?
Well.
I think it'd be a clarification that, um, you would just have an update that the amount was actually higher than stated, and then that would be in this meeting's.
This time, okay, that's what I was.
Would that be under your portfolio holder then?
I'll just do it under portfolio.
Yeah, under portfolio, yep.
I wasn't sure how we wanted to do that, so, just so it's easy to find in ten years.
Yeah.
Has the, I know, this is kinda wild, uh, discussing now, but has the work been done already?
I don't think so, because it rained.
Okay, I'm thinking out loud here, because technically then it should be brought up on the agenda again, and basically voted on again as a correction.
We can, I can do it, we can do it that way.
Yeah, it wouldn't be part of the minutes, but I know what you're getting at.
But if it's, if it was.
We did vote on it the first time at a hundred dollars a load.
Incorrect. We have to, then my question is, how do we cover correcting it?
Well, did we, um, we approved it with her portfolio updates the first time, I believe? Or was it something else?
I put it as landfill updates.
Landfill updates.
It was an agenda item, as landfill requests, I think is how we had it.
Okay.
Um, I can, can't you just redo the motion?
Was, was it in the, okay, did Carmen mistype the hundred?
No, no.
No.
It's nothing to do with the minutes.
Okay, so the minutes are correct as stated at the meeting. All right, then, that would just have to be in, right, it'd have to be an i, uh, agenda item to correct it. Right, because the minutes are.
The minutes are in, right.
So there's nothing to amend in the minutes on that.
Correct. Okay, is there a motion to approve the September twentieth minutes?
So moved.
Motion by Jean, is there a second? Second by Rick. Um, any discussion, corrections, or additions to the September twentieth minutes? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. September twenty-sixth special meaning, uh, special meeting minutes? Is there a motion to approve the September twenty-sixth minutes?
Also move.
Motion by Rick, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Jamie. Any discussion, correction, or additions to the September twenty-sixth minutes?
You missing anything out there, Jamie, that you're thinking of?
No, because I think I'm confusing the two.
Okay, because the twenty-ninth are the next ones that I just got out.
Yeah, we didn't get to review, so that's why we mailed them out, just to see what they're going on.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. September twenty-ninth special meeting minutes?
Motion approved.
Motion by Rick, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion?
This, the forty thousand still removed from the budget, did we? I'm so confused, as if we took it out, or if it's still sitting in la la land in the general fund somewhere.
No, the expense side of it is gone, but the, the forty thousand that was gonna be transferred in from the interest fund, that is still in there, and it's on that transfer sheet showing it's going in, and then also you can see it when we get to the budget on, uh, the revenue in the general fund. You can see where it transfers in, it's also shown on the transfer sheet.
It's just not assigned to anything.
Right.
Correct.
Right, it's revenues, forty thousand.
I just want to double check.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Uh, review of bills?
Did everybody get their September twenty-ninth minutes, because I have duplicate copies?
Oh!
I have multiple copies. Does anybody, anybody, anybody need any? Twenty-ninth or twenty-sixth?
I have twenty-sixth and twenty-nine.
Yep. Do you want me to?
We'll get you the twentieth.
Do you want me to get you some copies there? All he would need is the twentieth.
Twentieth and twenties.
I have, I had double copies of those for. Oh, yes, we added, what we added was civil process rates, under other. Yeah.
Yes.
I don't know if you've ever seen one of those. It's stuck in the oven. It's supposed to be crazy.
I guess we're going to be buying all this kind of stuff.
I suppose it's not prohibited.
Someone still had a contract on that? Taking care of that surge, maybe?
I didn't say anything about that.
(coughs)
I'm excited. Good news. It's all messed up. It hates it. It's funny.
That's a challenge.
How great can you do?
Carmen?
Yeah?
Do we normally pay state fuel tax on dyed fuel?
Oh.
They got state fuel taxes on dyed fuel.
Okay, let me go ask.
I think that's correct though.
You think that's correct?
Because I asked him about it and we ended it. He, I don't remember how he explained it, but we ended it in that time.
Okay.
Because of the on the fuel, there was something to do with it. I said, oh, we don't pay taxes on that. And he said, yeah, this thing we do.
Okay, this is the first time I noticed that, but.
Yeah, I think it's the first time it's happened. I, I don't think they've done that before.
Well, there was, no, it was before because there was a question on the one with Federer, not rude, but, but it was about two months ago.
Okay.
And I, he asked me about why we bought it from them and said, you know, Ken has got a lower bid and everything. And I mentioned, in that conversation, the taxes came up at that time, and we still pay that tax. Because I said, well, we did pay that, and he said, we do. But he could explain it to you, but that's where, that's where that came from.
We can go back to that.
That's where, that's the only reason I would. That would be the only reason I would know about it because we had that conversation a couple of months ago. But I can't give you the answer in detail, but I.
Okay, well, I mean, if it's already been asked, then we just need a clarification, but. This one doesn't say it wrong, so. I saw that, I looked. I'm assuming what happened is they cleaned up one and then changed the top.
What was this one, do you know?
It's a court case.
Oh, that's good.
Usually goes with the amount of dollars.
Yeah.
There's another one, but that was the other one.
Yes, that was the one we made the motion, and yep, they've been put in.
And it came out the emergency fund or the emergency management fund? The emergency fund?
No, no, the emergency fund, yeah, yes.
We usually throw those away.
Is this a daily review?
Yeah, that's on the back of that form, it's got like, um, the meals, and then it'd be a total if you were there for the whole day.
Uh, state. Actually, a couple meetings, so we approve the state rates. And they get up dated as you guys approve them. But we usually stick with the state rates.
But it went up, like it was lower. Yeah. No, it was like thirty-six or thirty-eight, I think, before. Okay, is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make a motion to approve them as presented.
Motion by Rick to approve the bills as presented, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, Rick?
I vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Um, next up, we got Mercer County Economic Development, uh, Weaver and Buster. Sorry. They, they jumped in front again. They, they asked really nicely.
Just this once, Cindy.
Good morning, uh, thank you for letting us come in front of you again. We're coming in front of you for Mercer County Economic Development. MCDAD, as we call it, is requesting that the commission consider funding MCDAD either through an allocation or a mailing. Uh, MCDAD is requesting an amount of up to four mills or amount that the commission feels is appropriate. Uh, funding from MCDAD will be one of the few lines that increases expense or your budget that has the opportunity to provide a return on investment. Funding, um, for MCDAD will provide a pathway for community development via grants, daycare assistance, studies and programs that will pave the way for economic development in Mercer County, which will increase the tax base and sales tax revenue for the county and benefit each city and all the residents of Mercer County. Mercer County, recently, uh, we submit, through Beale and Hayes, we sent, submitted an RFP for a four point two billion dollar project. Uh, five other states and two other locations in this state that were competing for that. Mercer County was selected as the site to go to. Uh, there were numerous reasons why we ended up losing it. Unfortunately, that project is still going to stay in North Dakota. Uh, it's at the governor's desk right now and at Commerce. But one of the reasons why we, they did not is because we did not have the ability to provide studies related to rail traffic, uh, and capacity, um, for power. Uh, all our industrial sites, the only information that's been put to those is information that Buster and I put together. So, somebody wants to look at building on one of our industrial sites that are zoned industrial in Mercer County, there's no information. How much power, how much water, sewer, electricity, uh, that are available. And so, a very important thing for, for economic development for Mercer County itself is to be able to complete these studies. It's a four billion dollar in Mercer County changes our tax structure, our sales tax, and this, so, um, it could have a very positive impact on our, on our county. The federal government currently has millions of dollars in grants available to counties that are located in coal and coal-fired power plant locations. As far as I know, this is the first time in history that the federal government has grants specific for those counties and cities. It's upsetting to me to see all the awards given to other communities that have coal in other states and we're not tapping into that and having an opportunity to, um, participate in that, uh, in those items. There's also a lot of programs available on state and federal, uh, leading that are grants and programs that provide, uh, assistance for comprehensive plan updates, planning zoning maps, master plans for cities, master plans for counties. A lot of these are done free, but we don't have anybody that's out there taking and pursuing them for our counties. Or, or straining for our cities, but not for our county. And so, um, we would like to do that same thing for the county. If, um, MCDAD would provide quarterly updates to the commission related to all the activities and utilization of funds dispersed by MCDAD. Currently, the council does have a representative that is, uh, goes to our MCDAD meetings and participates. We ask that please consider funding the future of Mercer County by funding MCDAD, and I want to thank you for your consideration.
And I would just add, uh, the information that I had provided to you earlier, basically, is kind of a recap in terms of projects that we have done in the past. And what I'd like to do is explain a little bit in terms of, you know, where those are at and how those materialize. You know, originally, we did a housing and a childcare study, uh, to the tune of about, uh, we collected about seventy-six thousand dollars. So, you, so you can see that if you want to do a decent study, you know, those things don't come cheap, okay? And basically, what had happened in that case previously is we had, uh, tapped the resources of many of the, uh, Mercer County Economic Development, uh, members that were a part of the group. And basically, what had happened in that case previously is we had tapped the resources of many of the Mercer County Economic Development members that were part of the group. In addition to that, there were also outside agencies that contributed to this fund for the project because they realized the importance of it. A couple of spinoffs from that, from that study that was done in fourteen and fifteen. You know, we ended up then using that information twofold. Actually, we ended up using that information to help secure HIF dollars from the state of North Dakota to the tune of $2.2 million in Hazen so we could put up the Pioneer Apartments building. And then also, about the same amount of money was granted to Beulah for their energy apartments at that time through HIF dollars. So you can see that that's quite a turnaround in terms of dollars for that initial investment. In addition to that, then, that, the information that we gleaned out of the childcare study also then was used to incorporate that information into the grant application for the Energy Capital Credit Childcare Facility in Hazen, the co-op. So, that's just the one spinoff. And then in addition to that, you know, the other area that we have expended dollars into, basically, has been into the grant writing. And I did give you the list there, but to keep it short, approximately $17 million worth of grants were requested in three different phases. You know, as part of the coal community stuff that came through EDA. Recognize the fact that eighty percent of those dollars that I have listed there, that's the amount that we would have gotten from the government had we been successful in those grants. There would have been another twenty percent match for some of those. The thing about it is this, is that every one of those grants, the terrorism grant, for instance, when that was written, that is a, that was a hundred-page document. You just don't put documents like that together in two or three days. That was very intense, and I thought we had a good chance at possibly landing that, but we didn't, we didn't get a sniff for any of that. The other thing that I would just tell you is this, that Beaver and I did have a chance to meet with the federal representative from the Denver office and asked about our grants and what had happened that they had gotten refused. And one of the things she said, "I really want to get a dot on the map in Mercer County," is what she told us, "in the future." But the thing about it is this, is we do need dollars to operate. And the thing about it is, is it's, it's difficult, you know, when we have limited resources to do things. So, with that, I guess I would just, you know, open it up for questions, if there are any.
If I may, Buster, those three grants you see cost us about $45,000 to have those grants written. And that does not include any time, Buster, my time, that we were the leads on. So, to get an idea of what type of money went into writing those grants, when they're, you know, hundred-page documents. We had letters of reference from the governor all the way down to city mayors, so.
I got one question, is like, we were asking, you know, some of the money that we had in place was from a lease agreement with the Basin Transload Station, and that is going away, I'm guessing?
As of today's date, or as of October first, that lease no longer exists. We are still going to try to negotiate a different lease, but as of October first, that lease is nonvoid.
So, I mean, if that doesn't, what's the plan there, I guess, going forward, other than leasing it with it?
Ray, if you want to come up, Ray's with Global, he's, I think you've been here a couple of times in the past.
Yes, many, a few years ago. Thank you, commissioners, for allowing me to speak. My name is Ray Sheldon, I've represented Basin Transload for the last fifteen years, so I believe I can help address your question. In the lead-up to that, I would like to express my support for MACED, I've worked with them for the entire time. I've been a career developer, developing rail terminal facilities in three counties in North Dakota, a couple of energy developments in Montana. And the efforts that the groups like MACED provide allow developers like myself to actually get things on the ground. To your question, yes, our lease has reached its expiration date. We are attempting to renegotiate that. There's another local landowner that's involved in that deal. We're very hopeful that we'll be able to renegotiate something that works. From our business perspective, we were developed as accrued by rail facility. With the development of the Dapple Pipeline, that really took away the market demand for that facility. So we are in an effort of trying to repurpose the facility to bring economic value to the, to the area. We started primarily focused on the oilfield types of activities, because that's where our roots are, I guess. We've expanded that into a wide, much wider variety of opportunities now. COVID took a toll on those efforts, and I believe that we've got some very positive opportunities in front of us. Nothing's certain, but the types of efforts that MACED provides to provide that underlying support allows those kinds of projects to be developed and furthered. So, I think they're, they're kind of under-recognized activities that are there. And I believe that the leadership of North Dakota has been quite visionary overall in trying to advance the economic activity in the state and would urge you to do the same with the MACED group for Mercer County. Can answer your other questions, if you have it.
Any other questions?
Well, I guess, I mean, you have no real specifics of what we're doing, you're just looking at opportunities right now, though.
We were looking at putting together between all the parties that have land ownership out there, a joint marketing group. So we can market the property, the Zap Mine property together. We're looking at putting in, creating an industrial park that has more than just one entity there. But again, the three parties have to come to an agreement, we all three own part of the land, and so we have to come to an agreement to do that. We're meeting with a third party tomorrow afternoon. We've had meetings for the last year, but we're hopefully going to do something tomorrow afternoon, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday. That's, that's very optimistic, though.
And I don't, I don't think anybody is unaware of the fact, the potential that that transload station area could bring to Mercer County in terms of where things are at, looking to the future for big projects. That's, you know, it's got rail, and it could have access to water quite easily, I think, and so.
A rail study is probably the highest study that we need to take place right now, because everybody that comes here, it's rail and highways, transportation. And without that study, it affects all of our cities also, because those trains go through our cities. If we, you know, start running full, full-weight cars, right now, we only run halves. That's going to tie up intersections, et cetera. So we do need a study for, it might include looking at overpasses or underpasses, and then companies need to know what the rail activity is that they can expect if they locate Mercer County. We've got the best infrastructure in the world located in one concentrated place. We don't market it. If we did market it, every RFP I get, I get put on, I make at least close to the shortlist, because people want to move here. Natural gas is still a hindrance, but we will, we're working on that also, so, our focus is these and MACED.
I do have a lot more questions, but I don't know if you can answer all of them right now anyways.
Yeah.
I know, like, there's a pipeline that goes to that facility, I mean, that, I mean, we're able to push things back this way, or is that, is that, is it a outgoing pipe only, or whatever?
No, the pipeline that serves the facility was an inbound pipe, it provided crude to be loaded on rail to provide that. We looked at reversing that, as the oilfield is continuing to move this direction a bit, that may come back up. That has not been viable opportunity until, up until this point in time. There is some significant investment that would go with that. We do have a good base to work from, so it's not as much as having to start from scratch. But we are a little bit out of the heart of where a lot of that activity has been, but it is moving this direction. And just as an example, we've had a number of inquiries around frac sand again. We've moved frac sand in the past, it kind of went away. There's obviously some local sand that's been developed in the county. Many of the producers are wanting to do a mix of local and imported sand to provide better performance from their wells. That's an ongoing, that's been an ongoing evolution of technology. We've also, as Beaver said, we are working hard on what I would call a clean, green industrial facility. That basically, we'd be providing the underlying utility infrastructure for a variety of types of industrial activities that could sit there. There's a lot of good reasons for those to be in Mercer County, but until all of those pieces are in place and we can get kind of the first block in place, and we've just got to keep working and advancing those things.
And the rail in Zap is kind of the end of the line, it's a spur essentially from Mandan, but it's kind of the end of the line in this area. It goes to AVS and DGC, but it's, it's basically a spur from Mandan.
Yeah, to that point, we've been working, got a new initiative, I guess, a relatively recent initiative. We're working with Burlington Northern and other industrial entities in the area to try to build a collaborative effort to improve the way the rail service works. I had been involved in putting a project like that together with Burlington Northern in the Gloss area of North Dakota. That's still operating, it's been a quite successful activity with about five different industrial partners involved in that. Looking to try to do something similar here, again, very early in the, in the concept. Can't speak much more to it than that, but there's some potentially quite exciting things that could come from that.
Okay, any other questions?
One other item on the rail that I mentioned. The Upper Great Plains Transportation Institute has been trying to advance a study on CO2 transportation. This is obviously the great place for CO2 delivery and multi-modal types of approaches to CO2 delivery as part of what that study would be involved. So we're helping support that as well.
The site is also a brownfield site, so it qualifies for idle dollars for just about any type of development, so.
Would they ever be looking at moving that rail, putting that rail back west again? I mean, it used to run all the way to Kildare, but I mean...
Yeah.
That's just...
Unfortunately, I think that train has probably failed.
Maybe this is a silly question, but is this something that needs to go on the ballot? Or is this something we can just do?
I think it's something we can discuss at the budget part of the meeting.
What was your question, Jean?
She was just wondering if it'd have to go on the ballot. No, there's certain, depending on how you look at the tax levies, and I know Carmen has passed out the thing before, but there's certain categories that you're allowed up to a certain limit, and if you want to exceed those limits, that's when it goes to the ballots.
That's when it goes to the ballot.
That's going to be part of my question, too, if we can, as a commission, can just create a entity with a mill levy amount? Or if that has to go to the voters?
We can't create some, a mill levy, essentially, the state has a set of criteria of mills that can be levied. It's, there's, there's other ways besides mills to generate things, but that would have to come with like a home rule charter county through some other type of revenue source. But the state's very specific on what you can tax as far as mill levies go.
Should we be looking more at allocation rather than...
At this point, it'd be an allocation, because it wasn't in our preliminary.
Correct.
And we used to put money into the MACED.
I think we did, but it's been...
Like twenty-one or twenty-two, there was money in that.
So we could give the Mercer County Economic Development essentially an allocation.
It wasn't much, it was like...
And then my recommendation would be to have Mercer County Economic Development approach the citizens of Mercer County and get it on the ballot if you would want a specific, I don't even know how to say it. So that you would have anywhere, anyway, so that you'd end up with a mill levy. That would be my recommendation. I'm uncomfortable, as a commissioner, to tell the residents that there's going to be, that you're going to pay a particular amount into a new entity. I'd rather have the voters of this county vote on it and agree to it, but I don't have a problem, given an allocation, that being like a one-time thing. I mean, one-time thing, it could be every year, but it'd be a one-time. And let the voters make that decision rather than just the four of us, on something of that nature. Because four mills right now would be about $200,000.
A little over $200,000, yeah.
And just where we're at in this point in time with the budget for this year, I'm leery. Not that I'm leery of MACED, I'm just leery of the... And it wasn't an allocation, it was like a due, that's what it said on the... Didn't you guys used to have dues every year that the company would pay? I just know there was a, there was a dollar amounting economic development.
I believe, and I'd have to go back a little, I think twenty thirteen was the last time we charged dues. And I thought that Mercer County amount was right around $20,000, but I might be wrong.
I think it was ten, ten, eight or ten.
The last one they requested was like $8,000 that we had earlier in the year.
And of course, we would take a lot more than that.
And then, with what I just said, as far as an allocation, there may be a dollar maximum that we as a commission can allocate to any entity also. I'm almost certain of that, you know, we can't just allocate a million dollars to somebody.
Right.
I'm pretty sure there's a max, so whatever that would be, just keep that in mind.
We would be very appreciative of anything that the county can do. These things are important for our cities and our people.
Yeah, and to Jean's point, I mean, if we had something in the budget as far as an allocation for next year, and then we found out that that was more than we could give, then we can always give less. You know, it just wouldn't be expended in the budget.
I just want to point that out, that there, I feel there's a maximum, so even if, let's say the maximum is $20,000, even if it's $100,000 and we allocate more than that, well, we can't give you more than what is, what the state sentry code allows us, so.
Well, and I know there's been strong feelings from different community members that already pay into JDA's within their cities to then now have to pay tax dollars for MACED as almost like a dual thing. So, I don't know if those cities get exempt, if that's even a thing, but that's been said by others to me, that they already pay for a JDA, and so.
I think these are two different entities.
They are, but...
JDA and MACED are operating with, it's like the difference between community development and economic development. They're not the same, they're different. A daycare is community development, because it puts your community economic development takes and provides services for the entire county or city to grow the economic part of it. Economic development fails without community development. So, but it's, they are different, people may consider them the same, but they are different, they attack different purposes.
Right, I'm just saying, that's what's been, that's what's perceived, that's what's been said.
Are the money sidehand in hand with JDA and MACED though?
No, our JDA's get funds from our cities, and the state allocates how many fun mills that is. Anyway, both Hazen and Beulah use mills, other cities do different things, they can use sales tax, et cetera. But we, here in Mercer County, both of us use mills.
The other thing, too, that I would just remind everybody, we've made a concentrated effort at trying to make certain that the, it's just not Hazen Beulah. You know, when you think about MACED, you think of Hazen Beulah mostly, but we're trying to pull in all the other entities, all the other towns as well that are in Mercer County. So, and give them a voice also at the table, because we have had a better representation than we have had in the past from, from this smaller city that we all are meeting, so. That part, I think, is very positive, because, you know, the idea is to look out for everybody.
What about like, I don't know how you want to say it, but like the books? I mean, like, where, who, you know, I mean, do we get to see where where this money is being spent or?
Yes, we'd be hundred percent transparent. We could come quarterly, annually, whatever the commissioner wants.
You know, so guys can watch, kind of see where things are going, how it's transpiring. It gives you a better picture of what's actually gonna happen, you know?
I would, myself personally, I'm only a voice for MACED, I'm not the, I don't get to make the decisions, but I would personally request that MACED to come to this commission and provide updates on a, whatever, professional regular basis, so that you know some of the things we're working on. I think it's beneficial for everybody to know that. So, both financially and projects, I think it would be good to spend more time with those commissioners.
Well, I think, you know, not only, not only for us, but the whole community, you know.
I agree.
Okay.
I could ask one question. On MACED, how is your your tax structure? Are you a nonprofit? Are you a for-profit? How is that set up?
We're a nonprofit, five oh one C three.
Okay, very good.
And you're originally incorporated in nineteen eighty-six, I believe?
I don't remember what year it was.
Yeah, when I looked it up, it was eighty-six, I think. So, not quite forty years, but they've been an established entity, so. Well, if nothing else, I think we'd like to move on and then we'll discuss allocations in the budget part.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Hi Cindy.
Hey Cindy.
Welcome back. Have a seat.
Okay, and Ken Boston, I have the wrong range on there. It's thirty-one, one forty-six, eighty-six, from what I get, from the numbers I gave to Carmen.
One forty-one?
Nope, it's one forty-six, eighty-six. It's not eighty-nine, it's eighty-six.
Okay.
We have eighty-six.
On the, on the forms, but on the agenda.
I got it right on the form, wrong on the agenda.
All right, gotcha.
Is it time to go home yet? Okay, you ready?
Yep, go ahead.
Uh, zoning case twenty-three oh nine oh one is an application for a conditional use permit for a non-farm residence from Derek Kessler. The parcel is approximately two point five eight acres in size and is described as tract eight in the southeast quarter, the northeast quarter, located in section thirty-one, one forty-six, eighty-six. P and Z did recommend approval on September twenty-first. And really, this is just like, they already have a house there and everything, they're moving a new house, and so this is basically for financing, really. The bank wanted them to have the two acres.
The bank just wanted them to have a certain amount.
Yeah, for the two acres for for loan purposes, or really, it's just a technicality. They're getting a new home, a bigger home.
Yeah, so it's an existing residence, but then they're switching out.
Right, they added a little bit more because they needed it from the bank.
Well, the bank, it must not have been financed before, so the bank only wants the couple of acres on there. That's, that's nothing unusual.
They built a new house and they wanted, the banks requiring.
A dedicated parcel to that.
A parcel that they can put their fingers on, so it's.
Right.
I make a motion to approve the twenty-three oh nine oh one Derek Kessler, non-farm resident application.
Oh, second.
Okay, motion by Rick, second by Jamie. Any discussion? Seeing none, Rick?
I'll vote aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes.
Okay, the next thing I have on there, Planning and Zoning has proposed a four-month moratorium on any new gravel pit applications because they would like to redo the ordinance for that, since there's really not a lot on there. But like Dan had talked about at the meeting, there's a lot of stuff, I had given you guys the sentry codes on that, and like, a lot of the issues that they're worried about is reclamation, and the way it looks here, to me, I don't even know why we have reclamation on our permits, because it says here that that's supposed to be between the landowner and the mining operator. They're supposed to have a contract according to sentry code. You know, Dan had mentioned that at the meeting, the probably Industrial Commission and all that.
I don't know, I could ask if there were state regulations.
Yeah, there is.
So.
My, my question is, do we have, they always say we have no gravel in the county, why would we have no gravel permits?
Gravel pits? Well, they don't have to give it to the county.
Pardon?
We have gra, a lot of gravel pits in the county.
I know, new ones. I mean, where do we have, every time we talk to our.
The last one we had was that Basant's one last year. That was the only new one.
How does it affect our guys again? Gravel pits, it wouldn't matter?
Oh, our guys?
Yeah, like Ken.
The county.
Yeah.
I think what you're saying is you're worried about if we put a moratorium on it, then would that affect the county being able to get gravel if we need it?
Right, if we finally discover it. I just think that either, we always hear there's no gravel in the county. I mean, you know, we don't have any, or are we actually looking, or what?
Well, we're short of gravel, and if you want to put a moratorium on gravel.
I don't want to put a moratorium on it. I don't want to. It's a lot of work. I don't want to.
Yeah, so, I guess. From my perspective, the views on.
Not you personally.
The views on gravel pits is that we, it's not that the, the land within Mercer County is without gravel veins or pockets, it's just that there is a lack of landowners willing to do a lease or a gravel pit, which limits the amount of gravel that's actually available in the county. A lot of the gravel we use is imported from like Twin Buttes, which is Dunn County, or Riverdale, which is McLean County, or and we've gotten stuff as far as Douglas, which is still either Southern Ward County or Northern McLean County. I don't know exactly where the county line is there, but that's kind of the issue and you know, P and Z, some of the members is, well, we should, we should update our code and kind of how Cindy said, you know, some of it is probably outside the county's rural authority, but they want something in in an ordinance for for more control, but it's really up to the commission whether we want to do a moratorium. If if we want to update codes, that's fine. I think in this situation, I don't know if we necessarily have to have a moratorium.
That's what I was wondering, can we, can we update it without having a moratorium?
You can definitely update without having a moratorium.
I mean, going into winter, so I'm not sure where, but did this discussion come up because?
It came up because one pit is.
I'm gonna digress here. Why, why do, why is a four-month moratorium being requested specifically?
Just so that they could rewrite some part of the ordinance.
Well, they can rewrite the ordinance.
They were just looking at, how do you want to say it, more of, somebody would come in new that we, like Mike said, we have really no teeth in our ordinance whatsoever, and they were looking at changing things, and they didn't want anybody new until they got some teeth in their new ordinance. In a nutshell, is that more?
That's kind of a nutshell, yeah.
That is what.
Yeah, so, I mean.
I think we could still do what they want to do. Because if anybody comes before us, we gotta approve it anyways.
Well, we'd have to review it under current regulations, so.
And some of it, if they are concerned about reclamation, that sentry code is very specific. So, I don't, I feel like that's not a thing to argue with.
So, if the commission doesn't take any action, then there's no moratorium, but if P and Z wants to go forward with, you know, drafting something for our review, it would be fine.
For the order of the meeting here, I'll just ask you to ask for a motion.
Okay.
On a moratorium.
Is there a motion from the commission to implement a four-month moratorium on new gravel pit applications? Is there a motion? Is there a motion? Seeing no motion to take action, we'll consider no action as we're not planning on a moratorium.
Okay, thank you. And in my next one, I'm just wondering if any of you were able to visit with Todd about my purse issue?
I did get some information, but I haven't had an opportunity to talk with Todd. I got it Friday, so. But I do have information that has been provided to me that I need to discuss with Todd. And I haven't shared it with the rest of the commission yet, because I have it here, but I just haven't shared it, so. Anything else, any?
Nope, so, nobody else?
Nope, no comment.
Thanks, Cindy. Highway Department, we had a couple items that were tabled from the last meeting. We'll just bring them back to the the floor. And and I know we kind of briefly talked about it during the agenda, so.
Yeah, my recommendation is
Do you want to read, to read the motion?
Hold them down, and then we can address them later.
I I think we should probably read them, just so that we know that we're what we're voting on, but like Jean said, his recommendation or his thought process is he needs to do some more research, but he recommends voting them down and then addressing them at a later time. It should be in the minutes, right?
That was the twentieth?
Twenty, yeah.
Is it the first one?
Page three.
Page three, okay.
Okay, the first one. First one was to allow automatic issuance of overload permits applied for on the load pass system up to a hundred and fifty thousand. Permits exceeding a hundred and fifty thousand will be reviewed by Mercer County Road Superintendent and will be allowed or denied by the county commission. In the case of an emergency or time restraints, the county road superintendent may approve the permit. So we'll bring that motion back up for discussion. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Jean?
No.
Rick?
I, no.
Liza?
Nay.
Jamie?
Nay.
And I'll vote nay. So that motion fails. The second motion that would be brought back up to the table was starting in October through the last day of April, Mercer County Road Department will work Monday through Friday, eight hours per day, starting at seven AM and ending at four PM. Is there any discussion on that motion?
I need to visit with Ken some more on this. So I just assume, so we get it off the table.
And I've had a couple county employees call me, so I think you should discuss with Ken and make sure that we're, we're good with that. So any further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
No.
Rick?
Nay.
Liza?
Nay.
Jamie?
Nay.
And I'll vote nay. That motion fails. Ken, do you have anything, Road Department, vice?
I think, um, privately, sometime next week, Jean, we need to go up to that Secocwe Estates Road and that north south stretch, that they're saying it's a county road, and I talked to some of the locals that live up on that road. It's about halfway, there's that, it's like a, that house that's for sale for like one point five million. And in my opinion, it's a private drive going to the north there, because it's, I know I can't get one of my big motorators down there, because it's just a narrow road. But I'd like to have you come up there and look with that. But they had said that, Paul Bush told me it was, he was told it was a county road, like I said, some of the locals I talked to said that's never been. It's narrow. It's, to me, it's an access to those people down below.
And that's north of the east-west road?
Yep, right in between, well, right, there's that big man, I call it mansion with the and then the, the blue one is to the west of that, and it's right in, right to the west of that blue house.
Kind of a trail down in the west part.
Is that almost down in a valley?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, we'll go look at it.
Is there anything in the recorder's office?
No, not that I can, and no, not on that portion. The only thing I s, I seen was a deal from when Todd with, when they were talking about paving it, and I don't know how that got, you know, like I said, the locals said, some of the locals said no, so. It just doesn't seem, I mean, it's not wide enough, for one thing, like I say, it's an access, and it dead ends down there, so. There's no hollow. It's narrow, but we can.
I wasn't aware of a path, pathway down that way that was open to the public.
I never knew it was.
It's a small road.
Yeah, it's just an access.
If anything, I would have thought of private access.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think next, next week sometime, it works out, yeah.
Okay.
Whether or not, we're still hauling ground, we'd like to get one more day. Last week when we were trying to haul on the pit up there by Beaver Bay, the loader broke down, so we only got a quarter of a day in on that day. So, we're trying to hopefully line that up for tomorrow. We can get those spots down on county five and fourteen. We got a few spots on thirteen, but those we can get with our trucks, so.
Are you fully staffed yet, Ken?
Um, we've got a couple applications for just an equipment operator and a class B truck driver is what we're.
What, your current rate?
Yes.
Okay.
But you moved up one of the truck drivers to an equipment operator and still hiring an additional equipment operator?
Well, because Kevin Husso retired.
Okay.
So, and he was in the operator position, so that's the one, and then where the other position was a class B, yes.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, anything else for Ken? Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Let's take a recess until ten thirty, when we have the second reading of the assessment procedure.
Oh, no, sorry, yes, that's for October second. No more, yeah. The last one we had was the twenty-ninth, I, we called it, we sent it for the.
Oh, so, so they're at, they're at the meeting.
You're done.
We're good, okay, perfect, thanks.
Definitely.
What was this? Why don't you get a copy of this Wayne Basant's?
Oh, that was part of, that was part of the package. Just like, the temporary permits.
Did we approve these earlier? What's up?
I saw that, too. Where did it?
What's that?
I said, I saw that, too. Where did it go? Oh, it's just on the back of, like, these are the existing permits that that we have.
I get it, I get it.
That will come up for.
For gravel?
Yeah, that will come up for everywhere.
Okay, came together finally in my head. Simple chairman here who put it together. Simple chairman here who put it together. All right.
Where's the Leroy Fisher gravel? I know it's got though. Right across, it says Marty Reich.
It'd be south of Zapp. Be like three miles south of Zapp. Oh, this is sand, I mean. It's the only one I don't know where it's at. The Leroy Fisher one.
Yeah, because.
It's a scoria pit. Oh.
That's not north of Buella, you said south of Zapp.
South of Zapp.
Correct, yeah. Are you talking scoria or gravel?
Well, here it says.
You're gonna be confused now.
It says, um, temporary use scoria pit.
In our package, how's Cindy?
Yeah, it's towards the back.
That's what I understood, yeah.
Which their, their request was on anything new, or anything that was going to be renewed, so, but. I think she provided those so that you could see why we currently put in. That would have to be addressed if we didn't, you know, are they grandfathered in, or are they? Because they are temporary. It's, it's messy out here whenever you do something, so.
Your initial thought would be it's grandfathered in, because it hasn't actually been in place. You're thinking it has to go with the initial. You can't like go back and say, okay, by the way.
That'd be almost right south of her.
Renew, you're renewing the old one, like a cap, but if it's, you're starting all over, you know.
Liza? That's gotta be almost south of your place.
What, straight south?
Marty Reich, you know the bridge is going by the lake?
Leroy Fisher.
Like Wayne, Enzels, you know what I mean, Enzie, you're talking, right?
No, Leroy Fisher.
Here's the intersection, south of that. And the road goes south and becomes a big curve, an S curve.
Oh, okay.
And then the bridge is down here.
Yeah.
Right around this S curve and right along.
Okay. For some reason, I was thinking over when you go south, almost east of Liza's there, that curve around that, okay.
That's Peter's and stuff.
That's eleven, okay.
That's county eleven, yeah.
Okay. All right. We still need.
The width for Jamie?
All right, I'll call the Mercer County Commission meeting back to order. On our ten thirty slot, we have the second reading of the special, special assessment procedure ordinance. Have we received any comments or anything?
No.
Nothing? So basically, we have the second reading of the ordinance. If we approve that reading, then my understanding is that ordinance becomes enacted, right?
Okay.
Or.
What we're gonna do is if you guys make a motion to accept it, then I'm going to have a thirty-day period for the people can comment or bring any, you know, if they don't agree with it, they got thirty days to look at it. And then I'll have it in my office, I'll put it in the paper. They've got thirty days to come and get it, make any kind of request to talk to you guys about it again, because they don't agree. And then we'll put it back on the agenda for a hearing, if we get anybody that wants to talk about this again. And if not, then it will be accepted and that will be that.
And then even if we do the hearing and we don't make any changes, then we just accept it?
Yes.
So do I not have a public hearing?
It's only a hearing if.
If somebody.
If somebody, yeah, has a problem with it as is.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion to have the second reading of the assessment procedure ordinance?
I'll move to have second reading.
Okay, motion by Rick to have the second reading, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Gene, any discussion? As kind of stated, if we approve it as it is, then it'll go in the paper, we'll have thirty-day comment period. If anybody has comments, then we'll hold a hearing and address them, and then we can, we can finally approve it, so.
But people will clearly know that they need to put in writing to Carmen that they would like to.
And that will be great, yep.
And that will be in the ad, and it has to be in.
I just want to make sure people understand that it's not just gonna automatically, you can come to the public hearing, you need to send notice to Carmen.
To my office, yep.
That will be in your, that will be in your.
Notice.
Notice that you send up.
Okay, any more discussion? Any more discussion? Seeing none, Gene?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All would aye. That motion for the second reading has been approved. Okay, let's go to other business. Appointment to the North Dakota State Fair delegate for the annual meeting, has there been anybody applied or anybody?
I talked to Rick Scraba, and he said he would go and Jeff. I think we can take two or three, I'm not sure, but I talked to, pardon?
It said three.
Three, yeah. I may go, I'm not sure with my time constraints, but I talked to Jeff Klein and Rick Scraba, maybe those, or rest interest, they would go.
So for us to make, is it, do we get one delegate, or are we allowed multiple?
I wasn't involved in this portion of last year, but I must have got nominated, because I got a letter from the state, from Gary Canal.
Yep.
And I could bring up to two more people, and that's what I, on the letter.
Three delegates.
Three delegates?
Yeah.
Pointed.
Okay, because generally, if you're a delegate, you're a voting member within the meeting. So if we're allowed up to three, I think we should send three, then we would have three votes on any, anything that would be brought up, so. You're stating Rick Scraba?
Rick Scraba, I'll go and Jeff Klein.
Okay, do you want to make a motion to that?
I'll make a motion to approve myself, Jeff Klein, and Rick Scraba.
Okay, motion by Rick.
Actually.
Go ahead.
I'll make the.
Yeah, if Rick's one of the members, he should probably.
I'll make a motion to delegate Rick Scraba, Jeff Klein, and Rick Bowman to go to the.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Jamie, seconded by Gene. Good catch, guys. Any discussion? Excuse me, any discussion? Seeing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
All would aye, that motion passes. Anything else on the state fair? I think that probably.
Should do it there.
Do it there, okay. Emergency declaration for September fourth storm? I think we talked a little bit about that.
We had a storm in the southern part of the county also, and we made a, Craig mentioned that, you know, we had a storm in the southern part as well as the northern portion earlier, and not to forget them also, so. I'll make a motion that we make the same emergency declaration for those people in, on the September fourth storm, as well as the earlier one.
Okay, motion by Rick for the emergency declaration for the September fourth storm, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jamie, any discussion?
So that includes what area, Rick?
Pardon?
So that includes what area? Because I know the northern part, but you said down the southern.
On Labor Day, it was another, another, it was a small, much smaller area, but they had a real devastating hailstorm down by the county line.
Down by the county line?
Like south on forty-nine.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
Basically, south of Zapp, almost.
Yeah, it went over to as far as Kirk, in our area, it was over as far as Kirk, Kirk Maze. That area, right along the, Flemers along there, right on both sides of the highway, along. Started north of, north of that big. Yeah, north of that big S curve.
That's a pretty big area.
I mean, it was kind of like a small track, but it went across.
Okay.
Went all over, right? So was it county rule seven?
No, I don't know exactly where it started on the, on the west end, but it, but it was right along, portion I know was.
Flemers was on one side, and who was on the other side?
Pardon?
Who was on the other side?
Well, on, on either side of the highway, there was a Flemers land, but there's a lot more than just.
It started at County Rule, right around eleven, yeah.
East, from County Rule eleven east, that would be more. More to the.
East all the way.
Into Oliver County.
Yep, into Oliver, and Morton's, right, Oliver Morton.
Yeah, it was in Morton also.
So just for clarification, this declaration allows us, if, if we needed to, emergency funds, however, these storms, similar to the other one, weren't recognized by the state, so there's no reimbursement for costs from the state. But this is just kind of a, we do the declaration, and then if we need to use funds to assist, it gives us that ability. But other than that, that's, it's just kind of a declaration, it's.
Allows us to use our.
Yeah, if needed.
But the actual declaration has to come from Terry. I mean, he has to write it up.
For me.
Right. You guys are making a motion to declare one, and that's fine, but then Terry will have to, yeah, do it like he did the other one.
Write it up.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, any more discussion on the?
Add that to your to-do list, please.
Sounds easier. Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
All would aye, that motion passes. Okay. We got, um, on the, Jim, we got the airport road project, I'm assuming that's the asphalt that we've been talking about.
We should probably have Ken see. My question is, is it only going up to the airport and not going the rest of the half mile down the stretch? Because I'm worried that then, if we pave that short stretch, the remainder of that road is going to be forgotten.
Yeah, I guess.
At the, at the moment, the, um, the thought was to pave it north-south to the airport entrance, or you turn and go west into the airport.
It's kind of like how what Buella has already to.
Yeah, it goes to the airport and then it stops, goes back to gravel.
If that answers for clarification.
But it's, I guess, kind of when we talked in the budget stuff, it was, um, if it's something we want to do in twenty-four, we should probably start the design this fall so that we can bid it out. And we talked about, I think, Prairie Dog Funds, is that the funding source for it?
That's what we originally, last year talked about, and we already had it on our twenty-twenty-three budget to do the engineering design of it for this year. And then next year is where it's actually to.
Right, but we haven't officially authorized any design or any.
Correct.
Proceeding on it, so. So that would be, that would be our first step, is to get the design going, and then that way we can, we can bid it. This one be through DOT, it'd be through kind of our normal publications, and it wouldn't have all the restrictions that we've fallen under with.
In the design process, that's where we could answer some of the questions Jamie has, then.
Well, I'm just, part of me is like, if it, if it has a more routine, weekly, every other week, maintenance already done to it, is that road gonna be as bad, and does it really need to be done?
Oh, so you're talking, if it's normally on the schedule, and the vast majority of that traffic would be now on asphalt, if that road would need as much going further south?
Well, just the whole road in general, if it's not paved, I mean, it is rough, it is washboardy. It's terrible if you're in an ambulance, but does the ambulance go out there enough to justify paving it? I'm just talking, I'm just talking.
All I can say is we've had many.
We've had many complaints.
Several requests to get it paved, and they say part of the reason it doesn't get used is because of how rough it is. So we go ahead and pave it, are the, is it gonna get used more? We can't answer that question.
And I know to Buella, yes, they have it paved out to the airport, and then it goes to gravel after that, but the road continues, and it's a main stretch where if we only go to the airport entrance, there's still another mile of road, I don't want it to be forgotten for the residents that do live down there. I don't, maybe it's just kinks to work out, but. It did, it goes into.
No.
Stops at everyone, like dead ends into a yard.
Yeah.
Is that whole road about a mile? We were gonna, according to the specs that Charlie brought up here, one time I remember saying we were gonna, the pavement proportion was point six.
Right, and then I think it's probably about another half mile after.
Four, if we were interested.
Right.
The other question I had on that project too is, is there grant money out there for, you know, for this type of projects? For like, you know, paving for like a hospital and things like, is there places to look for something like that?
Uh, I could assume there is, I don't know officially, that would be something.
That a guy could explore something that would get some, something to help with that?
You know, and I mean, we had MECED up here, that would be, you know, if we did give them an allocation, that could be a request from us that they pursue. You know, because that would, that would help everybody in the county. And kind of, a lot of the discussion on it was ambulances going down there for medevac and different things like that, so. That's kind of what you mentioned with the hospital, that is our regional airport, that's where most of those happen. It's kind of one of those services, you, you never want to have to use the ambulance or the hospital or things like that, but you're sure happy when you do need them, that they are. but you're sure happy when you do need them, that they are there, so. But as far as the airport road project, it was, the commission would have to give authorization to go forward with plans and specs for paving that road. And as part of that, we could discuss if we're going to go six tenths or if we'd go a mile or how we would.
I think I'd personally like to see two options, like what the six tenths is and what the rest of the way would be, like kind of two options. Because if it's not a.
A proposed budget?
It was in the project list.
It's on the project list, which is included in the proposed budget for next year.
Right, but the design of it is in twenty-three, was budgeted for this year, so it's in this year's budget for the design.
Okay. And just for discussion purposes, it doesn't mean that, it, it can be in part of, as part of next year's road department budget, but we can still vote to not have it done or have it done.
Correct.
Just to let everybody know, it doesn't make it golden because we pass the budget and then people say, well, now you're paving it. No, we still have to approve it after that step because if other expenses come up, we don't know. We get another county twenty bridge washout or something, that might put a lot of things into, onto hold, so.
Right, so if we had the design, then we would approve whether it would go out for bid, then once it goes out for bid, then generally we retain the right to accept any, accept or reject any and all bids. So, you know, let's say between that time, if something comes up or it's like three times of what we budgeted for, we shelve it.
Yep.
But either way, we would need a motion to.
Then I'll make a motion to start the design project for both the point six to the airport entrance and the whole road.
Okay, motion by Jamie to proceed with the airport proj, uh, road project, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Liza, any discussion?
One question and when we just, we put the, we put RFPL for design or does that just automatically go to the interstate or how does that work?
Um, at this point, you're just approving our county engineer to do it. You could change the motion if you wanted to do an RFP, it's not required, it's not the, it's not federal aid. It's, I think we had budgeted like eighty thousand for it, it's not in the threshold of even close to what would require a public type bidding. So you can do it either way.
Discussion questions, all it was.
Yep, don't, any other discussion?
That's a valid.
It's a valid question.
Good question, Rick.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. We got about ten more minutes here, North Dakota Perse Safety Plan Updates.
Okay, I asked Terry to come over and help me with this, but I'll make a motion to Mercer County Commission to make a motion to Mercer County Sheriff's Office to affirm to North Dakota Public Employees Retirement System, that Mercer County Sheriff's Office is form pursuant to a North Dakota Central Code eleven dash oh one and is neither a nonprofit corporation nor a for-profit corporation to join the North Dakota Perse Public Safety and Defiant Benefit Retirement Plan and offer the plan to all eligible employees of the Mercer County Sheriff's Office. The motion was seconded by whoever and that is, well, that'd be the motion. I'll give this over to, to, we can look for a second, but I'll let Carmen, you can get your paperwork on it.
Okay, motion by Rick for the Perse Safety Plan, is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, seconded by Jean, any discussion?
Carmen, it says all employees, I thought public safety was for correctional officers and law enforcement, right?
Yes, that is.
Did it say all eligible employees?
For you guys to get it and anybody that's qualified, that's, we followed the central code and Terry's aware of that too. But we need this motion, Perse needs this motion, so once I get the minutes done, even the draft, they'll take it and then we start pushing forward on everything that we've got, they just need that in order to put it all into Perse.
Specific worded.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep, they need it.
I just didn't know if it had to be eligible in there, that's all I wanted to know.
Yeah, so basically the motion we made a couple of months ago to enter into it, this is the formal that they requested. Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes.
We got a couple more.
Yep, go ahead.
Hey, I want to make a motion too, is that we add a five dollar administrative fee for the civil paper service on all of our billable civil papers.
Okay, motion by Rick, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. It's, it's the civil process, right? So seconded by Jean.
I'm on it.
Any discussion?
Do you have any, Terry will step up and answer any questions we have on this.
So it's just a five dollar fee?
To implement the fee, we don't.
Implement a fee, I believe.
We don't currently have one, correct?
Jean did, I did.
No, it would be implementing the fee because we don't.
For civil process, correct?
It'd be for us to collect the fee.
Yes, if you guys sent the fees that I, for serving civil process fees, some of them are exempt. This would apply to all civil process papers, not exempt by state law.
And then that monies would go into which fund for you guys?
Right back into your general fund.
General fund?
Set my fee rates, it goes back into the general fund, but in theory it offsets my, all right, it offsets cars, deputies, and administrative people that get these papers ready and send them up, you know, to be served.
Is there currently a fee?
No.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion?
Would this then, would this go like from your monthly recorders and sheriff's fees, this would just be a new, would this go into those?
Yes, it would, the sheriff's fees collected.
She should report it as.
And the fee is assessed to who?
It's that the fees assess to who's ever filed the papers when served. Be a correct collection agency, one comes to mind, I'll give it some, that's an extra charge for say, Ronan and Ashley researching the address, getting managers ready for the deputy to pay help to serve it. The fees on also mileage that is charged separately, getting them papers ready to be served.
And then how are they going to know that they have a fee now?
I'm going to put that on my official Mercer County Facebook page and we won't start until they've been reversed and also the Mercer County Government Page. After, if you guys approve it, then we'll go on the page, it's fees collected by the sheriff for civil process.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure people are aware that there are fees.
And then if somebody requests one, you would notify them that there's a fee for it? If somebody requested, you know, said serving, you would say.
They'll see it on, they'll see it online, like, say you need small claims paperwork served for you and you ask the sheriff's department to do it, that's where that fee would kick in, also we'll inform you of the charges before you have a servant, you know. Typically, sometimes do we require payment in advance before we do serve them?
Okay.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Seeing none, Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Is there one more for civil process?
I have another motion to make to increase the mileage rates that we charge in billable civil process papers to sixty-six cents per mile.
Okay, motion by Rick, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Liza, any discussion?
This was that we normally were paying, we were at fifty cents and state things have increased to sixty-six cents per mile and that's what we want to, we want to step up so we're.
In line.
In line.
That's current IRS rate.
Correct. Any other discussion? Any other discussion, seeing none, Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Uh, five more minutes here. Portfolio updates. Jean, you want to start?
Mine, short, Ken was here, he, as far as the road department, they're still working on roads. The weather hasn't been favorable for keeping the roads up, so they're, they're at it. Other than that, I haven't heard anything, State's attorney, he just raised his finger, he must have, I didn't visit with him yet this morning.
I just want to bring one thing up that was discussed last meeting when I was tied up in other things and that's in regard to that Golden Valley Bridge. I thought Charlie had it pretty well covered, but apparently going back and listening in on the meeting, not quite. We have two issues, we have one where there's a cost overrun for using the muck. The contractor submitted a bill for half of what that charge would have been. The contractor also went over, so there's a liquidated damages. The amount he submitted for the muck was nine thousand, just about ten thousand. The amount of liquidated damages is right at ten thousand. When Charlie and I met with the contractor, pending the commission's approval, the proposal that we're putting forward is that we approve that on the condition that, that be paid by liquidated damages, so it's a wash. Exact figures, I think there's probably a hundred and fifty, two hundred dollars, don't quote me on the exact number difference. But instead of litigating or going into the ADR proceedings to deal with the liquidated damages and the, the cost overrun, the contractor's happy if we just call it a wash. I think the contractor's kind of getting the short end of the stick because he only submitted a bill for half of the muck. If we had to go to this, we could end up owing ten grand above and beyond the liquidated damages. The contractor's perfectly happy with that way to resolve it. So I would ask the commission to approve the full part of what was not discussed last week, or last meeting, that we would approve the override, or overco, cost override in exchange for not imposing liquidated damages, so that neither party owes the other extra.
I feel like I was not under the impression that that nine thousand was half of the amount of the muck.
Nine thousand, yeah. Yeah.
I thought that was the full amount, the muck was nine thousand and something.
Well, that's what he submitted for a bill. But his actual, he could bill on that would be closer to about nineteen to twenty, if we wanted to go and push and everything else. The contractor's rationale for only submitting half is that there were some issues with the muck. The number one thing, and Charlie assured me that the finished product meets and exceeds specs. At the time the muck was used, it was used a little early without complete drying. So at that first moment, no, it didn't meet spec, but once it actually dried in place, we've exceeded compassion or compaction requirements. So we're getting what we paid for. It just didn't go the way the computer engineering figures say it should go. The ultimate result is we got everything we contracted for. And after we met, he was going out just to do some touch-up that he wouldn't have to do, but this contractor has a fair amount of pride in his work and he says, I want it to look just right, so he was going out and doing extra, no extra cost, of course.
Okay, what would the commission like to do?
Well, we just got to get this clear because I'm just reading from the minutes. And Wolf made a motion to reject the charge order request of nine thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty cents, and that motion carried. So that was the.
It's on page three.
And that, that is to, the contractor's bill was for nine thousand, correct?
Right, and as that was presented, I, I would say the board did the right thing because it didn't include the rest of the agreement, which is that we're accepting that bill, but it's going to be satisfied by waiving the liquidated damages.
I guess I would be okay with, with that, I don't know how the rest of the commission feels, but I don't know how to word the motion.
And that thing that throws me off is I didn't know that we had over, or right around ten grand in liquidated damages.
Yeah.
I knew we had the liquidated damages, but I didn't realize that there was this nine thousand of muck was only half the amount he could have billed.
Yeah, I never heard that ever.
Yeah, so.
So I.
The meeting I had with the contractor was a good thing, Charlie agreed with all of that.
Either Charlie or the contractor, like, I, I feel like I have never heard, I heard that there was the nine thousand for muck and the ten for liquidated and it would wash each other out, I have never heard this additional ten grand that quit, that he could bill for muck.
He could bill for that, but since it didn't meet spec initially, yes, we've got points, we can argue back and forth. But what I'm saying is, is we can go and argue all of this out and we're going to end up where we've got a wash with one side owing the other maybe two, three, four hundred dollars.
Do we need to have something in writing from him stating that he's willing to go with this agreement?
Well, if, if this board adopts a motion that they'll accept that overcharge as payment of the liquid dam, liquidated damages, so neither party owes anybody further, that takes care of it.
So in the end, no one, if we agree to that, however, we, we present that, if there would be, no one would owe anybody anything.
Right.
And this project would be done.
Right. And if the commission would like, if you'll give me that authority to take that forward, draft up an agreement to get the contractor's signature on it, then we can move forward. But if you give me the okay, I'll talk with him, I'll get that done here soon. This is a trial week for me that has been a roller coaster.
I think it would be wise of us to have his signature on the agreement.
Right. But if the board will approve it under those conditions, we'll put the agreement, because the contractor got it second and third hand. The board got part of the discussion. What I'd like to do is be able to just draw up a very simple, one-page document.
I'll make a motion to to do the, how do you want to call it, the, the cost override versus the liquidity damages is, is equal.
I think your motion would be that we would accept the change order and we would forgive the liquidated damages and consider the matter a wash.
Which is how it was addressed, like Todd advising the commission to pay the contractor as requested, as a change order.
And then the motion would be to approve that pending signatures on a written agreement.
Right, we'd want that in the motion, pending the.
Because if all of a sudden that.
Did you do all that, Carmen?
No, I didn't, so you guys need to speak up with the lights and I will get it after that, I mean, if you can speak up, because, okay.
We'll get it caught up.
So we've got a motion to accept the change order. Okay, so what did you say Travis?
The, the way I would write it is, the motion would be to accept the change order as presented, forgive the liquidated damages, and advise. and advise the state's attorney to draft a letter for the contractor to sign an agreement of those amounts.
How about make it simpler? You authorize the state's attorney to effectuate turning this into a wash. Because, let's throw all the possibilities. I get this all set up, and by the way, the contractors, Schwartz Contracting, they're no relation of mine. There's no T in my last name. The relationship, as I understand, the genealogies from back in the 1500s when the eldest Schwarz boy wanted to marry somebody Papa didn't agree with, so they immigrated to another part of Europe. But, no relation. But let's say I give this to Mr. Schwartz and he says, "No."
Well, I'm just advising, I'm just saying.
Go back the other way.
Yep.
We understand that.
Authorizing me to...
Travis, can we have this table just because I've nev- like, not that I don't trust you Todd, but I've never heard Charlie say that this is half the amount. So that's why, where is the misunderstanding between all parties?
I learned that when we had that meeting.
Right, and that's...
Well, I don't know if we necessarily have to table anything, anything if we want to. I mean, because I'm just telling you how I would do the motion if I did the motion. If, if the commission needs more information, or you'd like to have Charlie here when we discuss it, we could just put it on next agenda and bring it up under the road department.
I'd rather not table it, Jamie. I would just assume we move forward as recommended by our state's attorney. And in the motion, it is pending that agreement. And at that point, we can still vote it down.
Yeah. Nobody's bound until both sides sign.
Because it's pending that agreement. So it basically, we're not agreeing to it at this point. We're just giving our state's attorney the authority to move forward with getting an agreement.
Sure. Okay, I need to read this again. Okay, made a motion to accept the change order as presented and forgive liquidated damages as a wash, and advising our state's attorney, well, then he changed it to effectually turning this into a wash. But you guys said pending, advising the state's attorney to develop agreement? Where did the pending come in? Pending signatures of...
Pending, they agree. Pending their, well, they agree with the signatures either way.
So here's what I'm taking, is that by approving this, you're, you're accepting the concept that we can make that a wash.
Yes.
So, that way the taxpayers aren't out anything that they should have, and the contractor's not out anything he should have.
It's not going to cost us anything. We're not going to gain anything. We're going to get done with this John Shields Bridge. I've been the commissioner for over two years, and that's all I hear is John Shields.
Did Gene second it?
Nobody's seconded it yet. So motion by Rick, is there a second?
I can second.
Second by Gene. Any discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion. The only thing I have to say is that we just need to be cautious on projects going forward. I didn't like how this was brought up after the project was basically completed. You know, if, if we get, as a county, that we're willing to just go with whatever the contractor requests, and it comes after the fact, and it's not notified properly, I see a history or a future of a lot of contractors just trying to pull the same thing, so.
Yeah, we've got another big county project coming up, County Road 20 Bridge.
Correct.
And don't want to have the same thing happen there, and that's getting to be an old one too already, so.
Well, I will say that when the contractor was requested, he came up, he took the time, came up, sat down at my office with him, with Charlie and I. It was a very rational, reasonable discussion. We like to think that when we do a construction project that, okay, we got our specs, we got our blueprint, and bada bing bada boom, everything goes, and sunshine and rainbows. But rainbows are usually preceded by rain and troubles. I don't see anything that the contractor did that was, was wrong or unreasonable.
The only thing that, the discussion portion of it is that Charlie sat here last, two weeks ago and said that he still agrees with it, even after your conversation, and now we're hearing the other side of it. You know, it's almost like...
Well, it's just kind of the rest of the story.
Yeah.
I thought it was simple enough, but
Okay.
We'll get her taken care of.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Seeing none, Rick?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
Liza?
Nay.
Jamie?
Nay.
I'm going to vote nay as well. Motion fails. We'll proceed with what we had before.
I think I would like it put back on the agenda and have Todd and Charlie, and have this re-discussed, because I feel like it was, you both came out of it with two different stories, and I don't know who to...
Carmen, can we put it on the next agenda?
After listening to the discussion and the...
We want a time slot?
Put it under the roads.
Yeah, roads, yes.
In listening to what was presented at last week's meeting, you got half of it, Charlie.
Agreed, and that's why I'm saying, I just would like, both of you here, if possible, to discuss it.
Okay, that's part of my portfolio update.
Right. Okay, we have to go to the public hearing, Cato Properties has a petition for closing roads, so. We'll pause updates and resume the public hearing, so. Is there a motion to close the regular meeting and open a public hearing for the petition to close the road? Motion by Jamie, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Ryland, if you want to come up? Go ahead, Ryland.
Good morning. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is the same map that we had previously at our previous meeting a couple of weeks ago. After you guys accepted the, or made the motion and accepted to have this public hearing, we published notification on September 14th and September 21st, as required in the century code, and have given now the 10 days past publication. So, do you guys have any further questions on what we didn't discuss at the last meeting?
Get any comments, general public?
Oh, wow.
Nope, okay.
If I may add one thing, you asked for a little better description of the road, Jamie. Just for everyone's information, the paved road coming north of Zapp, which is County Road 13, is right over here, two and a half miles north of Highway 200, is where this turns into gravel, that is described as Sixth Street Southwest. Anyway, it comes to here, the road has been closed here already. The purple lines are, we are requesting for closure now. This is the only gravel road which had ended at Rudy's House Farm. These are undeveloped section lines, so that's what's in the request. Thanks, Ryland.
Thanks.
And your, where will your control gate be located?
Right there at the corner.
Okay.
The gate was here at the Rudy's House Farm, because this is all closed already. It's moved from here, one mile over here, and everyone who needs access to there,
has kids.
All of the contingent of the workers have already been contacted to give them access.
And there are no residents that...
No residents whatsoever. Some, basically some hay ground back there that people need access to, all the hay out of, and cattle in and out.
Just bring that up so that it's
Absolutely.
On the recording, so people can hear it.
Yeah, and the reason we have to gate it is in our permit that we will secure anything within our permit boundary for security of the general public.
And I know the public can't see the map, but there is a dark black line that defines their permit boundaries, so that's where he's talking gated access.
Yes, currently where the gate is located, it'll be moved one mile west.
Correct.
For clarification.
Can you hand me the map, just so I can hold it up here, so people want to see on our video, they can zoom in on it. I just want to make sure people have the opportunity.
So just, you know, just point it out one more time.
I'll be happy to.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the gate would be there.
Exactly. That is still a public road coming from the west. The reason we need to put a gate there is because if you press further down there, you would come into open mining area. So it is controlled access point. Right now, yep.
Currently, it's here.
And right here, too?
Those are untraveled, undeveloped section lines.
Okay.
The purple, we need to request closure of all section lines per the century code. The black line, which is our permit boundary, is not a section line, that's in the middle of the section. So that's not even a trail. These are section lines which we need to request closure on, even though they're untraveled and undeveloped.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that request, Liza.
Since it is the, the public hearing, is there anybody from the public that would like to talk on behalf of the road closure, or the section line closures? Once, twice, okay? Any other questions from the commission and the public hearing portion? Otherwise, we could close the public hearing and go back to the regular meeting, and then we can make a motion for the resolution. Seeing, no further comments? Is there a motion to close the public hearing and resume the regular meeting? Motion by Rick?
I'll second.
Second by Jamie? Any discussion? Seeing none, Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes. We're now in the regular meeting again. Before us is the resolution to close the section line roads as depicted on the map and described. Is there a motion for that resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jamie, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion?
Just one question. Todd, we are, you have no objection to any of this?
Wait, wait, go ahead.
I just asked, you have no objection to the section on closures that we have here? Here's the one that usually says, it says something about the section line.
As long as it's a temporary closure, that once they're done, it's reopened.
Yeah.
Temporary, and they are gated, and they have access to who needs it.
In the past, with the mining activity all over the county, there's been temporary closures. The only time I'm going to get real excited is if we're going to close it permanently, because once the mined land is reclaimed, that road needs to be reclaimed as part of it.
I think that's covered under century code anyway, correct?
Yeah, but if the board just closes it without the temporary, it's closed.
The motion was to approve the resolution, which in the resolution, it says to temporary close.
I see it's there, okay, we're good then.
So I haven't seen the resolution, but...
Temporary.
Yeah, if it's temporary, we're good to go.
Okay.
Sure.
This is a fairly...
Pretty standard.
Yes, pretty standard. The first sentence of the resolution is temporary closure for my...
We're good to go legally.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
Liza? And all vote aye. I can't remember everything. That motion passes.
Is there a certain one you want everybody to sign?
I just know that I said aye instead of...
I'll sign it, and I want everyone to sign it, okay.
Which...
Okay, so this is the one that passed, and we're all...
Okay.
You guys can all sign it.
Carmen?
Give it to you.
Yes, we will, we will send back to you that, along with a proof of publication.
Okay, cool. All right, thank you.
Nobody wants to be on the top one?
Reserve that for the chairman. Throw you right up on the top.
First one that get hit by the bus, is that what you're saying?
Pretty much.
Okay. We got a few more minutes. Any, any other portfolio update, Gene?
No.
Okay, Rick?
Oh, I just did, just retiterate to the fact that our annual meeting's coming up here on 30th of October, and you're all welcome. And we're going to have a potluck.
Going to have a potluck, okay.
Is that Fair Board?
Fair Board. That sounds good, Fair Board. Okay, as far as my updates go, Lewis and Clark Development met last week. They were a little worried about government shutdown on the federal level, but I don't think that happened. I think they passed it.
I think they skidded through, yes.
Yeah, I think that was just before midnight on Saturday. So they don't have any issues there. They're proceeding with their normal loaning. They're doing very well. I think one other time I reported on them, since 1990, they've loaned over a billion dollars in the state of North Dakota to help a lot of rural development and various other projects around the state, so they're doing well.
With the rural development, that can't be a part of economic development? Like, it's not, they're not used for the same things?
Well, they're, they kind of act as a bank, more or less. They're a loaning program. They, they're not, they don't just give money, they don't receive money like that. They, they're kind of like a revolving loan fund, similar to the state, has a state revolving. So essentially, they're generating money by loaning it out and then collecting interest and then redistributing it, so. Good question, though. Library Board met last Monday. No updates with them. They're solid on their budget going forward. And then, let's see, I think nothing new on planning and zoning. Cindy brought forth what we had for them. And I think that's all the updates I have, Liza?
Excuse me. For the airport board, Sean Strummy has replaced Ron Worth on the board, and basically, we're just working with ALP to see where we're going to start with our monies, hopefully that come in that get approved by the feds. But then, of course, you have to go through the whole programming to approve those monies again, kind of. And for the ambulance, still waiting on our new ambulance, but are looking into potentially purchasing, or looking at purchasing a second one, because Big Bertha, as they call it, is not running as good as she should be. And because of the time length that it takes to even get this one coming, which hasn't come yet. So they're looking at options for that, and different agencies that might provide that. And still looking at the health insurance with them as well. And of course, they're still working on what they're supposed to do in regards to that change, and to if they should have their own mill levy or not.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay, Jamie?
Candy, as far as landfill, she did get her check for her steel that was bailed. That was a nice amount. And then, we did have some clarification on the score, yeah, so Travis, if you're okay with that, I'd like to make a motion to clarify the amount on the score of $400.
And then we did have some clarification on the scoria, so Travis, if you're okay with that, I'd like to make a motion to clarify the amount on the scoria of $400 per load instead of $100 per load from Leroy Fisher.
Okay, a motion by Jamie for clarification that the scoria was $400 per load versus 100 as reported earlier, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jean, any discussion?
She is only looking at about five loads roughly, so it's not a massive amount, but she just wanted to let us know the clarification on the amount.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes, anything else, Jamie?
Uh, no, I think Jim's been just busy with normal getting ready for winter maintenance, so, and haven't had anything since last meeting, so.
Okay. Alright.
I'll take just a couple minute break.
You want to take a break till 11:30?
Sure.
Okay, let's recess till 11:30 and then we'll talk on the budget.
That clock is one to two minutes fast.
Okay.
So what, okay, the motion on the first.
Yeah, we'll put the second in and the second over.
Yeah, good.
Ooh, second in again.
Jean, I believe.
Oh, that's okay.
Jamie did?
Jean.
Jamie did? Yep. That's from around. That's exactly where.
Yeah, Jean's second. And then I'll have Travis sign this. I think he's second.
Yes.
Yes. Yep, and I think. At the last, at their last budget meeting. And he purses, okay, Jean's second. Purses. And then this one was there and then this one lies. So it will just be. So I'm glad we get the same coverage, but the sheriff's. It just, yeah, depends on how the numbers, yeah, everybody would get the same coverage from the county. Okay, Travis, can I? What was that in the last Friday? So I'll have you sign them. That was the one we wanted him. Was it 29th? Um, they're going to give it to us. Because they needed a second, they're going to put these second.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm a rare one that asks to spend money by the county. Did you both see the nice big colorful map of Mercer County in that fair wall?
I don't disagree with you.
Dan is now Vanna. Yes, we can, we can arrange that.
Alright, 11:30, I'll call the Mercer County Commission back to order. Next on the agenda is the final 2024 budget approval. I know one of the comments we had had to do with the special vehicle fund. I think we had to make a motion to actually transfer that to the fund, right? Was it 120?
Right, and I'm kind of concerned on that because if we transfer that and they end up having some vehicles coming in, wouldn't we have to transfer that back again? Shouldn't that be something that waits until December if we need to transfer it in a special vehicle fund?
Yeah, I mean, that was, that was what I was unsure of, but I mean, we talked about it at one of the budget meetings, so I, that was the first thing that came to my, I wrote it down, so.
And that would be like what we talked about at that meeting where we end up, in the end, for 23, we have to go through all the amended, whatever went over, we amend it.
Okay.
And that's 23, and that's all in 23.
But we would do that in January?
Yes.
And how does that affect the 24 budget? Does it?
Doesn't.
It doesn't, okay.
That would not affect the 24.
I just know it was one of the comments at one of our hearings and I wanted clarification.
So currently he had, Turnus has the money in the special vehicle fund that he could utilize currently for vehicles coming in.
It's in his budget, it's in the general.
Yeah, it's in the budget, so if it happens this year.
General fund under his special vehicle, and I believe it's future vehicle, you have two, yes, $15,000 in one and then the rest of it in the other.
And so the money's sitting there and it's ready for him to be able to utilize when vehicles come in.
Right, but if it's not expended by the end of the year, that's when we would do the budget fund.
Then we would make the motion, correct? Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure everybody was on the same page with that one, because it was, it was a comment.
But then it was budgeted again next year. Okay, no, what we budgeted was 155,000 because he split that between those two accounts. That's what he has in his budget, absolutely. This, like, these copies say 120, something, 24. Okay, and what? Like your original spreadsheets say 155, like the spreadsheet you made, but none of these Excel forms say 155. Okay, because everything under the general fund, like for the sheriff's office, is in one line. His whole budget is in one line, the way to look at every line item in Terry's budget is that AS400 sheet that breaks out everybody's department, yes. This, this form doesn't split it apart, because AS400 is every line item. So, but what is the 120 that's in the special vehicle fund that you're showing? Okay, what page are you on, Jamie, if you want to see?
Can you, here's my question to Carmen, is the colorful one the most recent one?
Yes.
Or is this one the most recent one?
The one that you just got today, the one I gave you guys that was sitting on your places here, that is the one that we went with your, your motions that you made at the 29th meeting? But it's again. And we went through it line by line and that is the most updated that we're living on. That's.
It's the one that had.
Okay, read that one.
Okay, so it's updated 10-3, so this is the one that we need to be.
The one that you got today was the one that we put the motion in. Okay, the 120 is actually an expenditure. And the only reason why I'd have put that in there is because. It's on page 48.
48.
47 and 48. You know, it's something that would, I don't know, I mean, it's an expenditure. It's been in every of the six copies. But I think.
Under certain circumstances, I'm going to pay for them vehicles and nothing will have to be rolled over, so we can go into 2024.
Okay, and actually when we talked yesterday, we didn't realize those lease payments either, but, yeah. So that's just an expenditure and that can be taken out.
We're going to zero it out one way or another.
So then this again becomes just, yeah.
That way we don't have to be rolling over it, I think that's for something.
And I think the reason too why we put it in there is because if you're spending out of it, it looks like you're going over your line because there is no budget for it, it's just a.
Yeah, and I had a pretty different.
And then that's why we called Ashley and we talked to both of you yesterday about it, so then we understand better.
Sure, definitely everything, but now I think I know where we need to go, well, let's figure it out.
Definitely your 155 is budgeted in your budget.
So I need to say we're better.
You'll be even more happy if we get a vehicle.
No, I just want to make sure. Yeah, that was the sheriff's, so that he had, but it's. It's coming on, it's still a version.
Okay, you need some more. So how much is budgeted to go into the special vehicle fund for 2024?
We don't, we don't actually budget.
No, I requested two vehicles for 2024, there shouldn't be anything in that fund if we get the vehicles. If we don't, if they can't come in, provided you approve it today, if I do get them vehicles and they can't come in, then we have to look at rolling that money into 2025.
So.
Or paying the bill and not having the vehicles.
We, we just want to make sure that it's not in the budget twice.
No.
Right.
So, is that kind of what you're getting at, Jean? Because I, I think I kind of get where you're, because on page 47, it shows final appropriation 120,000.
Right.
But if we got the vehicle in 24, we wouldn't put anything in the special vehicle fund, correct?
Right, correct, so your plan was to roll 122 over if you needed it, but you're planning to spend it this year, so that, all of that just goes away, the 122 plus the 120, it just all goes away if the vehicles get bought this year.
As long as my request for 2024 is going to be approved by the 9th.
Because the request is 155 for the two, that's all in together.
But it still shows a balance of 234.
Okay, this is like a holding fund? This, this, on page 48 and 47, this special vehicle fund, it isn't, there's no mill on it. It's like an equipment fund that we hold money, and he happens to have paid off some leases through there, but normally we just put the money in there and that's why he wanted in 23 this whatever's left put into this, so in case he does get time or finds vehicles next year, then we would have monies in here. So, okay, so up here, okay, so look at your estimated revenues for 2023, there's 122,520. That's what's going to give, that's what we're going to transfer over because he doesn't expect to spend that in his budget. So that's where that brings in money to this account. That is money left over in his vehicle funds in the general fund that will be moved to this fund if he doesn't spend them by the end of this year. So that's the revenue source is the transfer, 120 is the expenditure, and if you're looking at that 354,000, is that what you're looking at the ending balance? That's money that's just already in one account.
No, 234 is already in the account.
No, 354,000 is already in the account.
That's just.
Okay, there's the word right here. 354,000 is the cash carryover. From previous years, that's what's accumulated in that account so far, if you spend 120, then you end up with 234 by the end of next year. So we needed to estimate that to make sure. So to date right now, if we go look right now, there's 354,000 in that? No, not until we transfer over all these monies at the end of 23. Because look down, when you see at the bottom line, that's our estimated 2024.
But if you say there's 354,000 in there right now.
No.
No, there'll be 354,000 at the end of the year. That's what I mean, I don't think there's that much. Yeah, at the end of the year, there will be.
So, a way to look at this is that.
Even at the end of the year, there's going to be that much? Well, no, not if they spend 120,000.
If she uses the vehicles.
Back to the beginning, so right now currently there's 234,000 in the special vehicle fund.
Right now, January 1st, there was 6,113.94, we started with, okay, beginning of 23, there was 47,213.94. And then we transferred in.
That would only be for one vehicle, I thought you had two vehicles.
Well, I didn't get a vehicle last year, I have that rolled.
Right, so that's what I mean, shouldn't there be two vehicles worth?
I'm looking at right now, but two in the next year, so, yeah, that shouldn't be in 300,000 somewhere, there should be 120, whatever something this year. My budget request for next year, which I put in high at 150, 155, in case of inflation or parts or whatever, but that, I expect them to be almost under, so even if, and to add my notes added together, it shouldn't be the amount you guys are talking about.
No, well, here's the thing, it shows, see, because you got, you have spent out some money, about 48,000, and that's where. I know that isn't what's in there, but we're transferring 122,520 at the end of 23, and that's going to add up in there. And, but money has also been spent out of there.
Yeah, just, just a.
I want to know, where's the 234,140?
It's not in there yet. This year, if you look on the page before that, on page 48, at the end of 22. Beginning of 23. The beginning of 23, there was 47,213.94 in that account.
Okay.
Okay, you look up on top, you add in the estimated revenues for 23. That's where you get the ending balance of 354, 140 at the end of 23. And it's not handed 23 yet. Right, so, and the 122,520 hasn't been rolled, so that's not in that amount yet. And they said there's another 48.5 going in there, but that I don't think is been put in there yet either. And then the 10,000 up on top is just money that they were expecting to get from impound fees and stuff like that, right? Okay. Anything else, I think?
So the 122,000 has not been put into that account yet.
122,000, no.
Okay, well, that still leaves about 130,000.
Well, take the 47 off there that was already in there.
Okay.
So then you're going to come up with the, what's left up on top. Take 48 and the 10. Five, 48,500. But on like balance as of December 31st, it says 354,000. That what, that is what we are expecting to have at the end of 2023, if they don't roll over the 120.
Just.
Okay, now, like, that's what we're expecting to have, and we're sitting this 122,520 is in the general fund.
Right.
So these cars come in next week or whenever they are, if they happen to show up, how do we pay for those cars?
Out of that 122.
We can roll that over and he writes a check and it's.
Well, if they come in tomorrow, he can pay it right out of his account. Right, and it will come out of that 122.5. But that's why he rolls them over, he doesn't use them, then he still has them and he doesn't.
It stays there for next year in case we, if they don't show up, we need to pay for it, January 2 or whatever.
And then, and then that changes your ending balance on December 31st by that 120, whatever he spends out of there, that amount will be not in that 354 anymore, because it will get.
It will be gone.
Right.
So this is kind of a, this is government accounting? No sane person in their real life would use this because you would have your paycheck or whatever, your revenue sources and you don't have to estimate your end of year balances and. I'm not saying it's not confusing, but what Carmen and Don are just, are talking about is the proper procedure that we would do.
I get that.
Yeah.
The 234 to me just doesn't make any sense because even if you don't transfer the 122 in there and you spend the 122 and you started out with 47 and you end up with 234, those numbers just don't add up, you can't, but, okay.
I agree, Rick, or I agree, Jean.
Because you show 120 appropriated, you show 120 out. You got a balance of 354 at the beginning, which should have included the 120 over here, which is the 122,000 under expected revenues, and you end up with 354, and then you take out the 120, you end up with 230, but you start out with 47, you're only adding 180.
180, 120.
What's the transfers in? That's it, that's it, right here. Okay, so here's what we started with.
Yeah.
Okay, this is what you took out, so there you are, plus they added in the 47.
From where? From here, from right down here?
Yes, that's your balance, so here you got your 172.
Yeah, but this, this includes this 122 here.
This.
Yeah.
This.
Yeah, you get 354, which includes this 122, which hasn't been put in yet.
Right.
Because he might buy his vehicles, so if we, so then you come over here and you got 120. 120 plus, 120 minus, you still got 354. Which you got 122 here, so where's this 120?
Would you like a copy of it?
Yeah.
Jamie and I are going to. There's over there. And that 120 comes out of this. No, it's different. And that's where you end up with that.
Jamie, I'm sure, you can see.
But these two lines. All shares. At the end of the year, he only takes that out and nothing else is taken out. This makes you. But it's, like you said, it's holding, if he uses it, then it's not. Gives us an idea.
But if he use, if he, if he uses it, the one twenty two doesn't transfer over, but neither does the one twenty, so that just, that, you know, that zeros out to two thousand or whatever that gets added. It's gone.
Especially in the new one.
Because you get rid of both of them, maybe he buys something.
And the thing is, we're not willing it.
I understand what you.
I went off, right, I went off the business.
You added them all up and that's what you're estimating having.
Right.
And if you take it out, it's not going to get in there, and so it's.
Right.
You're still looking at these transfers. Like, uh, one eighty one is, uh, the forty eight. Yeah, they didn't know where the forty eight driver.
Well, and then, Jean, you said something about the forty seven thousand, and then you add a hundred and eighty or something, right, is that what you said?
The one. Yeah, the forty seven.
You take the forty seven that you started with.
You add in the one, yes, I mean, that's kind of comfortable.
Close to thirty four. And this forty seven and one eighty one is two twenty nine. That's.
Did you transfer your one seventy two there?
No.
One seventy. That's the one twenty two, no.
See, maybe that's what's.
No, you've got the one eighty one is what you're bringing in, where does the one seventy two come in from?
Yeah, so you don't need this one to change.
And that's probably it.
Should we always have both together?
That's what's going on.
We're going to.
Transfer in, so we already put it up here, so that's what's going on.
So take two thirty, three fifty four, no, take two thirty four, one thousand four hundred minus one seventy two. That's why, and I went through every transmit. And they, these, this one, except for the one seven.
Sixty two.
Sixty two thousand. According to.
If used.
Okay, so that's a note.
So where do you get the transfer in or do I?
See, that would have been.
The one seventy two is this one twenty two, five, I think, and then you add five on top. Yeah, and seeing, yeah, that's where it got so high.
And, uh.
Well, the total on top is one eighty one.
It's already shown up here.
Yeah, but that includes the ten.
So are the blue numbers.
So you're adding all.
Okay, what's that?
Are the blue numbers hard entered? Like when you have these?
Yes, yes, well, the hard.
Okay, so the white ones are the calculators.
Anything in white is is calculated and anything, yeah.
Okay.
So I mean, you add one eighty one, that's our estimated revenue with our transfers and everything, and then we have another, so that comes up to one thirty four and forty six is one eighty one. And then we add forty seven thousand in there, but I was just wondering, but then we added another hundred and seventy two thousand in there.
Yeah, and that's where that should have been there.
Yeah.
That we don't have a transfer of that.
That only affects the carryover, it doesn't affect the actual.
So then the forty six thousand was taken out of the one eighty one, we got a balance of forty seven, two thirteen. So.
I just don't want it to be portrayed portrayed or looked at on paper that there's all this money in this account and it's not really there.
Yeah.
So, okay.
And that's.
We will.
That's kind of what I was getting at is when I told love Terry's buys the vehicles and we show it as an in and an out, and how do we end up with two hundred and thirty four thousand when we start with forty seven, and we're going to add a hundred and twenty? But it's not been added yet, and we end up with.
Well, it says we're, it says we got forty seven, we're adding one eighty one.
Yeah.
Because we got estimated revenue coming in.
Yeah.
So that would be two hundred and thirty four. I just don't understand is where the one seventy two comes out.
Right.
Yeah, you're right.
Before we get too far here, on the agenda, we have that solar ordinance review, is that anything that is time sensitive or?
Well, you guys are the ones that requested it, and that's why.
The reason, I think, was with Jamie and I have discussed it too, is that.
The process part has been different than the special assessment ordinance anyway.
Right.
It is different, that's what I'm.
Well, and that's what we were, and because I asked Cindy, and she said she's never dealt with our ordinance, that's something different.
Nor your, your special thing, I don't.
Special, yeah.
Yeah.
Procedure slash ordinance.
For for ordinance, it's got it different than that.
Yes, exactly, and we followed your rules for the solar ordinance, because that's your thing, but is it, isn't that what your question was, it was different? What was your question?
Yeah, like why they're, why we're treating the special assessment ordinance different than the solar ordinance.
Because I think it's because what we're doing is putting an ordinance on. It it's not, it's different. It is not the same thing, this is a special assessment.
It's still ordinance, they were both ordinance, that's what I was getting.
Yeah, but we labeled it procedure, i- originally from McKenzie County, it was procedure, and then we did the slash ordinance, and then I tried to look it up to find out what the difference was.
That's what I've, I've been looking and I can't find it, that's why.
And I can't either.
Okay.
So it's not really an ordinance, I'd say. And 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 McKenzie labeled it a procedure, but, you know, Todd looked at it and he left it for.
Don't be talking about special assessment.
Let me clarify something, seems to be going off the rails. All this is is procedure for somebody, a group of people to get together to come in and ask for a special project. That by passing this, you're not imposing any special project on anybody. This is an ordinance which lays out the procedures, so yes, it is an ordinance.
Well, the question is, is that the procedure, that, uh, we asked, we had hearings, we had more, a couple of hearings, and we did all, we didn't do that in this, in this solar ordinance. We we just had one reading and that was it. Never brought it back again, never heard of it.
Oh, that's what your question is.
The solar ordinance goes through P and Z first, and then a public hearing there, you guys had the public hearing here, you guys didn't do anything at P and Z with this special assessment.
That's what we're asking these questions.
Okay, and that, that makes sense, Cindy, thank you, that makes sense.
So the the solar ordinance, it's been through, it has a different process to get that ordinance. But like any ordinance, it's not passed yet, but once it's passed, it can be amended, and just to give you the whole gamut of what you can do. Let's say this ordinance passes, and a month after it passes, you go, wait a minute, wait a minute, uh, there's things that we didn't take into consideration, or it's not doing what we thought it was going to do, or an actual application. Whatever, you find a reason that it needs to be changed, you could go anywhere from changing, uh, punctuation to erasing and starting over. You have that whole gamut. Once the ordinance is in place, then you go through amendment procedures if there's going to be any changes.
So as it stands right now, the solar ordinance that we sent out for publication, everything is in place?
No.
No. Well, we got different.
No, there has not been a vote to approve it in final form that I'm aware of. Oh, yeah, they signed that, and they did it June, they signed.
June twenty first, commission meeting approved.
Okay.
June twenty sixth, we recorded it, twenty eighth and twenty, uh, July fifth, we published, July twenty seventh marked officially thirty days comment period.
See, and I thought we were getting it back af- and I told Cindy this, I thought we were getting it back for like a second reading, but if it went through P and Z, then that makes sense, that's my misunderstanding, but I thought we were getting it back after that thirty day comment.
Okay, if someone were to come in and give me written, hey, I want to look at this, then yes, we would have.
No, in June, you approved it for the next step, it still takes a final approval and that hasn't been done. All that was done in June was we're going to approve this form for public inspection.
Correct.
And I know, yes, Cindy, we did, we did sign that, I I agree with you, but I, I really did truly think it was coming back to us after that thirty day period.
But century code says that if there's no comments within the thirty days, it takes a bet, that's what century code says.
Right, and so.
But that's not what the board's resolution was, that they got written up wrong, but what was said here was that you're approving it for public comment for it to come back. Well, then they shouldn't have just signed the whole thing back.
I wouldn't disagree with you, Cindy.
I, no, I, Cindy, I don't think.
I disagree with you, but correct, my understanding was that it was going to come back to the table here.
I mean, you signed a resolution like any other law, and it takes a thirty day, nobody takes a comment with every thirty day. Okay, let me, let me address that. I know each and every one of you, because you spoke to me, have heard comments from public coming to you as a commissioner. The public comment can be formal co- public comment for talking to the commissioners.
And I, I mean, I told the individuals that reached out to me, I I did ask them to reach out to the auditor's office, that's, that's what I did.
And if century code says a petition shall be in writing and shall specify and detail and run for objection. That wouldn't be a petition, so that would be the procedures for amending it. What this board passed is what's going to control. You passed this with putting it out to public comment, in fact, I remember Travis's comment, I see some things, I have a lot of questions on them, but let's get it before the public, because it's coming back. That was your intention, if I misunderstood your intentions from Travis and others of your comments, I'm sorry, but that's what I'm understanding, is what you were approving by signing that resolution to move it to the next step.
Do we need to just look at placing a moratorium on it then, so that we have?
We still have a moratorium on it, we haven't.
We never lifted that?
We never lifted the solar moratorium that I'm aware of. No.
That's the resolution that you guys signed.
There's been no, there's a, I know there's an expiration date on, but I don't know when that is.
What'd you say, Cindy?
Okay.
Then the resolution that you guys signed should have been changed. It should have said you guys are adopting this.
I'm not disagreeing with you, Cindy, I, like, at, no, no, and after the, like, after. I think it was August, I said, isn't our sixty day period up, we should have this somewhere, and then that's when I reached out to you and you said, nope, we adopted, I'm like, well, I did not understand that then correctly. So if, if we have, I don't, maybe.
Yeah, you have. Right.
Okay, if we adopt.
Adopted the following resolution.
If we adopted it, and it's, we can, we can amend it at any point.
Yeah.
We don't.
And there is, but there, there is or there isn't a moratorium on it.
So the only thing I don't want to have come up in the future is, let, let's say, next meeting, we put solar ordinance on the agenda, and I'll throw myself under the bus. I make a motion to delete the solar ordinance and replace it with none, that we don't hear comment that, wait a minute, you don't have a solar ordinance in place, because you didn't vote on it a second time or such. I, I hope that doesn't come up, I hope it's stated as, as of today that we have a solar ordinance, and we can amend it whenever we want. And just to reiterate it again and repeat myself, is I don't want to hear that, well, you don't have a solar ordinance in place, yes, we do. If if that's where we're going to stand today.
Just a comment on this. I think that what was signed didn't reflect the discussion. In speaking with you individually, every one of you were under the impression that we're just getting this forward for the public comment, and we'll work on it more as we go. But what ended up getting printed apparently and signed was an adoption, so we got a little bit of an irregularity. You're, you're not poured in concrete, that's all set up, and yes, you can still make amendments to this ordinance.
Yeah.
My biggest concern is that there's really not a moratorium on it, if Cindy gets a application at twelve oh one, if it's actually in place, then what? Well.
Do you guys have a list of stuff you would need?
I honestly, I've been focusing on budget stuff, I don't have, I'm not prepared to say anything about what I would change, I do think that there's things I want to change, but I'm not prepared to say that today.
So do we want to take any action today, I mean, we really need to get the budget done.
Yeah, that's my.
I would say right now, let's review the solar ordinance, just put it on net, put it on the next agenda, and we will. We'll vi- visit it, the solar ordinance on the next, the next, uh, meeting, but right now, we have to focus on budget. We, we. I, I think right now, though.
Time slot?
Do we place a?
Just.
Under Cindy's?
Anyway, that's my recommendation.
Put it, put it at ten thirty, Carmen.
Thirty?
Yeah.
With that moratorium.
Find out when the expiration on the moratorium is. Okay. Well, we had a moratorium for, um, any solar development.
Oh, that too.
What'd you say, should have been the commission? Or the P and Z? Anyway.
No, it would have been commission, yeah. Let's research it and get on the next agenda.
Can I?
Okay, back to the budget.
Just for a second, the special vehicle one, so I can break. Forty eight and forty seven.
Do you want a copy now?
Do you have another copy?
I have another.
Thank you.
Mr. Dan.
Okay.
I've got the most recent one that I have.
Okay, this.
This is my thing, this, oh, this is mine. Okay, where are we at here, Mr. Chairman?
Um, basically, if we have any questions, concerns.
Well, I see that at the September twenty sixth meeting, you, oh, where is it here?
Jean, just a second, I think.
Twenty ninth.
I gotta get these. On September twenty ninth meeting, you did, and. That's what I get for missing, missing meetings, I was busy. Um, first one here was a dollar fifty raise across the board. I'm opposed to that, but I guess the only way to rescind that would be to revisit it. Let you leave it in a form of a motion.
Right.
You got those in already? Okay.
Basically, we needed to decide on amount so that our, our budget reflected, um, anticipated wage increases.
I think the biggest thing, and I've worked with, I've looked at this, I've worked on it. The twelve point five four we've discussed for the retirement. I'm concerned that if we do it that way, then next year, when, and I, I get we can revisit this next year, but if, say, the plan goes up and we stay at twelve point five four, then the employees are continuing, any, any of us that get retirement, we all do.
What are we paying right now as county?
Uh, ten point two six.
Ten, ten percent.
Is it just ten flat?
It's ten, it's one point seven four and, or, yeah, one point seven four and eight point.
So the county's paying ten percent right now?
Ten percent for the employees who pay in five point two six.
Yes.
That's in the main plan.
Yes, so since we.
And what's it going up to?
Six. Two six.
Total. For the main, correct, yes, for the whole.
And eighteen point zero four for the public safety plan.
Total.
Total, yes.
Eighteen point, eighteen for the public safety is eighteen what?
Eight. Eighteen point oh four and sixteen for.
Sixteen point two six.
My biggest thing is, we still have our jail staff that is bringing, jail staff, law enforcement officers that is bringing a large amount of dollars to. a large amount of dollars to this county, they are still, I will, they are some of the lower paid employees across the county, they are still the ones working, the shift work nights, weekends, holidays, and so, basically now, what we did with the twelve point five four is still, in a way, penalizing them, because they're having to pay more. I just, I've talked to five other counties over the last few days, just seeing what everybody else does, and I know that we're our own, but I would like to, I don't know if we should rescind the motion, amend the motion, but I would like to change it to the county pays, since the budget was initially done at a hundred percent of retirement, I would like to make it that the county pays, make a motion to that the county pays all but three percent of all employees' retirement.
Have you made a motion yet?
That's, I think, what I just said.
Okay, so if I understand, Jamie makes a motion to, for the county, regardless of plan, to cover all but three percent of retirement contribution, correct?
Yeah, the number difference does technically come up to like three point seven two, but I guess that's a whole number, so.
Okay. Motion by Jamie, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Liza, discussion.
Okay, I was vastly doing numbers here while all this was going on, and right now, the employees are paying five point two six percent?
Correct.
And with the motion that was made last week by Mr. Frey, that to pay twelve point five four to all qualified across the board, that would reduce the employees to three point seven two.
Correct.
Correct?
And then the ones that are part of the safety plan, it would be a straight five percent? Or five and a half, excuse me. And that's the most that those employees are allowed to pay?
They're gonna be at five?
Five point five.
Right, they'd be at plus the one.
Yeah, my, my only thought process was that everybody contributes the same, and they're, because there's different plans, there's different amounts, which, that was just my thought process on how to accomplish it. If, if we do what Jamie's, um, talking, it's gonna make some slight adjustments, but, I mean, I'm-
What was Jamie's motion?
That all employees would contribute three percent, regardless of plan.
All right, Mike's, my thought on it is, process on it is, whatever we're gonna settle at, this three percent, or three point seven two, or four percent, or whatever we settle at, I would still use the same process of, of the, subtracting that, whatever the county's gonna pay, pay it from, you know, like, the same process that she's using. I mean, are we in agreement with the three percent, is what I wanted to know.
Well, that's what the discussion's for, like, if we, if we're in agreement and we pass it, then it'll be three percent.
Because it was an even number, if nobody cares about three point seven two, that's what I was initially gonna put, or if we want different, I just, three percent was more of a-
No, I'm, I'm all right.
But if nobody cares about a whole number, then-
I'm, I'm all right, I'm just wanting to say, are we gonna pay, we, they, they were paying five point two, and now they're gonna pay three, or are we gonna pay, they're gonna pay four or five, I just want to get that number, whatever we're gonna end up at.
Yeah, and that's what we're discussing in the motion, so at this point, it's three.
All employees would pay-
Three percent.
Three percent.
Correct.
And the county would cover the rest.
Regardless of the plan.
So, just for clarification, so the, um, the county would be paying the one point seven eight percent more for the public safety?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, that's clarification, not saying I'm for it or against it, all right. It's kind of, when you talk to numbers and dollars and cents, you gotta make sure everything is explained and gets clear.
Okay.
So, there's, there's not the what ifs later.
Right.
Oh, no, this is what was meant, or, oh, that's not correct.
All right, any more discussion on the motion, which would be the county covers everything on retirement except for three percent, regardless of plan, so the employees would have three percent contribution to retirement?
So, more discussion. So, that would supersede the motion that was made at the September twenty-ninth meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But if this fails, but then if this fails, then we revert back to what we have on the twenty-ninth.
Back to that, correct, that's, okay.
I'd be more in favor of the four percent than the three percent, but that'd be-
That's-
Then you'd have to-
I can amend it to four percent.
Then you amend the motion.
No, you can amend it, it doesn't have to be her.
You can amend the motion, but you need a second.
Okay, any discussion, or?
I would, um, do you want me to do it now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd like to amend, make a motion to amend it to four percent.
Okay, um, there's a motion to amend that the contribution for our employees would be four percent. Is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Second by Jean. Yep, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing then, we'll proceed to vote on the amendment, which is for four percent employee contribution. Um, see, who motioned it?
I'll vote aye.
Okay, and Jean?
I'll vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
I'll vote nay. That amendment passes, so now, excuse me, back to the main motion as amended, um, that the employees would contribute four percent to retirement, regardless of plan, county picks up the remainder.
I said three, right?
No, it's just been amended to four.
It's been amended to four.
It's been amended to four.
Okay.
So, that's why I said the motion has amended.
Gotcha.
Now it's four percent.
And if you don't want it four, then you'd have to vote down this motion.
And if you vote down the motion, then we revert back to what we did on last Friday.
And we're all the way back to-
Yeah, so, just so we're, okay.
Unless another motion gets made.
Correct. Any discussion?
So, we're voting on four percent or three?
Four percent.
Okay.
The number, now, okay, all right.
Yeah, okay, any other discussion? Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. The motion passes, so now, retirement contribution is four percent, all employees regardless of plan. Okay.
That's my understanding.
Yes. Okay. I know we're gonna kind of bounce around a little bit, but I'm just looking at roads, um, so, well, if you look at this, this evaluation, one here, all I'm gonna state is, um, so in the preliminary, the one that we approved back in July, county road mill levy was six point seven two, unorganized was five point zero nine eight, the secondary is seven point eight. I know these numbers have changed here, but that's what was in the preliminary as far as the mill levy. Um, as far as preliminary approval, that dollar amount figures into these, all I'm stating is that when we do a final on the roads, we can't exceed those mills. I don't think we can exceed the dollar amount either, correct? Right. Yeah, so, the one that we have today, county roads is page nine, five point seven six, that's on the sheet. Three hundred and twelve thousand eight ninety-two forty-six is the dollar amount, that's below preliminary. That's okay. Um, unorganized roads, page eleven, that dollar amount and mill levy was zeroed.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, and that was after some discussion, because we talked about, unorganized only goes to the county residents, not city. Okay, just, so-
But Travis, make note, you can, you can still pull three hundred thousand out of there without mailing anything. So, we still have three thou- three hundred thousand, we are gonna pull in for a transfer from unorganized roads, and it, and it, we don't have to-
We just don't have to tax for it.
Correct. Yeah, and then, page thirteen, aid to secondary, um, original dollar amount, four twenty-three eight eighty-nine. Um, this one is three ninety-two seven seventy-nine point nine three. Um, original mill, seven point eight, currently seven point two three, so that's fine. So, we're okay, I just wanted to, because based on the discussion we had at the other meetings, that county road is county right, uh, countywide, regardless of city or rural. Aid to secondary, same thing, unorganized, county residents only, so non-city. So, as we have it now, this is kind of one of the things where I mentioned, if we're gonna zero any of these, I would prefer the unorganized, which has been done in this draft, so.
And that's just to make it fair and equitable, fair and equitable, because the one that we zeroed would only go to county in, um, individuals, but if we do zero out one of the other two, then we're gonna hit city and county and everything, right?
Correct, so, I'm just pointing it out, that I'm comfortable with how it was changed, and that basically, nothing would be taxed on unorganized roads, so whether you're a city or a county resident, we're all county residents, but rural residents, I should say, um, we're all treated the same, as far as the roads go. So, more of a, just pointing out the fact, so that unorganized was, was the one that we changed to zero.
And then you're, so you're pointing at the beginning, as I see, uh, because of that change, the mills have now went above, was approved in the preliminary.
No, there's, there's, they're still below.
They're under it.
They're under it.
Are they?
Yeah.
We can't go over.
We can't go over.
My, my point was that, what you said at the start was that the mills, what you can't go over is the actual dollar.
Right.
Correct.
So, even though the mills have adjusted, because the, the dollar amounts are not being exceeded, everything is, is good.
Correct, and in this situation, it's lower in both sides, so, there's no conflict there, I'm just pointing out that, um, and some of those changes were due to, um, prairie dog allocation.
Oh, yeah.
So, how that was, how that was taken care of, so. And then, otherwise, when we look at dollar amounts, um, just across the board, they either match, or they're slightly less than what we had in the preliminary, other than general fund is-
No.
Difference is different.
Less if we didn't make any changes.
Well-
That had to do with the new form.
A difference.
Yeah, and-
So, the calculations were correct in that new form, rather than in some of the old, that old format, yeah, we always use a new form. Travis, are you done, because I have a few questions as to dollar differences, then, when you're done?
No, I'm, I'm just kind of laying out that, as it sits now, um, we're below the preliminary. And if we approve it as that, then it would actually be a reduction in taxes as it's shown.
What? What, what are we doing with the, the unorganized road fund monies?
We're not taxing, as it shows right now, and the one that we got today, we're not taxing for unorgan- unorganized roads. Unorganized roads, when they're taxed, then they get transferred into the county road budget, because we're unorganized townships, so the county basically takes care of all roads countywide, that, that we maintain. You know, that doesn't include like driveways and things like that, but-
So, there's funds in, there's monies in fund twenty-one forty-five. What happens to the money that's in twenty-one forty-five?
Yeah, we're gonna use it for county road, and for three hundred thousand, I don't have to mail for that, so I'm transferring it into county road.
Can we do that?
That's where we're going, unorganized building, aid to secondary, road, the county road, county road, buildings.
And I was gonna say, both of those is just kind of more of a formality of how you have to budget for them, but in practice, all that money rolls into one single road, which is the county road.
And make sure it's gonna charge again.
Yeah, I know, but there was, I know, we've had a lot of discussion on this, I've only been on the commission two years, and there's been a lot of discussion on what you can do with those monies and how you can move them.
For these-
And I don't recall. Yeah, well, yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't where you, you could just simply move it, because if that were the case, you wouldn't even need those, um, accounts, or those, I'll call them accounts, like aid to secondary road, unorganized road, and county road, statutorily, they were in place, and now, I do know that's changing statutorily, but there was also how you use that money, and I don't recall. But I'm not against just mov- moving it into the county road, um, just as long as we, we can.
I believe that's what's always been done, so I don't think we're doing anything different this year than we've always done.
Okay, Jamie, that's the question.
Um, between the new copy, the old copy we're using, the other old copy we're using, how did Carmen, like, Cindy's number is different, and clerk of court, on page six, so page six.
Page six, Cindy's, P and Z.
So, on the-
Director tax, okay.
The one that we were using from nine nineteen to now, for like, director of tax equalization, is different by eleven thousand, where did? Yes.
Um, a lot of these had to change, we have to adopt a new phone system. We are, we are going to V I P, and West River is mandating it. So, yesterday, when we went through this line item by line item, we had to move, change everybody's phone budget to cover that new phone system that's going in.
And honestly, we didn't get that till right before, and then we found out it was mandatory, I, well, our phone system's all-
But then also, like, Shannon's, like, the recorder's budget went down, and why, I mean?
Might be the same thing, I, I, I don't remember, like I said, we went through this line item.
Because I went through every transmittal compared to the one we had, and these were the ones that were different, but now they're different on the new form again.
Some of them had budgeted high for their telephone bills, and the new system won't cost them that much, so some of them may have gone down because of that.
Like, sixteen thousand dollars?
That, I don't know for sure.
That, it's just, we didn't make any cuts, and that's why I'm wondering where they came from.
Well, yesterday, we sat all day, all of us, and we went through everything, line by line, just to make sure.
So, we've got an explanation, just remembering we didn't, I'm, you know, out.
See, even like the states are changing, like, all of them are-
They're all, except for the recorder.
Right.
Right? Yeah, and there are, most of them would have went up because of the phone system.
These all went down.
No, they went down, and only one.
I thought you said all of them, except the recorder.
No, the, Cindy's went up, but most went down, and that's why I'm wondering, why, because we didn't make any cuts, and that's what the employees are worried about, is that there was cuts, but we didn't make any cuts.
We didn't make any cuts.
No, if some, nothing changed in their budgets, it was based on the pay, we did the one fifty, but then, and then the-
Even though we did pull, if they have retirement.
If they had retirement, we pulled that down.
If they had vacation payout in their budget, we pulled it, because we don't ever, nobody budgets, budgets for vacations, or not vacation. If somebody retires, you have to pay out their vacation, okay? Nobody ever budgets for that, and a lot of them that have their budget in there, it would have not even been multicovered in any way. So, we pulled those out, because that's not something this county has ever budgeted for, so.
Otherwise, everything else, we look the same.
Well, that might be part of it, too.
Because, I don't know.
And they're probably-
I can guarantee, we did not cut any of their office supplies, we didn't cut any of their travel expenses, we did not cut, I, I guarantee you guys, we did not cut any of that.
I don't want to accuse you guys of it, I'm just saying, the number- I don't wanna accuse you guys of that, I'm just saying the numbers and all on, and the numbers might once do not match.
You know what, Jamie, we pulled out all retirement and health and all that, cause before I put it all in together, that would've probably been it. Cause now if you see down in, uh, look just lower to the red, retirement county share, that's the general funds county retirement share. And then lower, you got health insurance share, that's down there. So those things were pulled out, so what you're seeing is actual.
Straight up salaries.
Straight up salaries and what's in their budget. And that definitely, yes, changed things. So now we pulled it out.
But I have, I mean, if anybody's, we have, we wrote on all the sheets of everything that we pulled, if they wanna see them, if they're worried. They're right here, they've got all the changes that we pulled, so, and I promise you, we did not pull anybody's.
And I, I mean, it's reassuring that the total number for the general fund is similar. It's just, I just didn't know why the, the specific departments, and I did, last night I went through every transmittal compared to everything.
We're glad people are watching because we're not claiming to be perfect, so we would rather have thirds and fourths and fifth sets of eyes out there, so we're very pleased that you're watching.
Well, how, for instance, how did social security go from four hundred and ninety-seven to three forty-three? That, that's, that is.
I just, the numbers are drastically different.
Big difference.
Well, this was specific to the general fund. Yeah, and that's, we worked those numbers out. And they're specific to the general fund and then every other fund, like the road fund has theirs, um, veterans. You know, every fund that's built has their own. And remember that preliminary was an estimate and I wanted to.
Because there was a comment here, you thought it'd be split if there's something. And I think some of like the Cindy's, like the tax equalization, I saw on your transmittal, there was a note from you about the vanguard being split over so many years. Cause hers on, on the new page six, hers is up, the only one.
Yeah, she's.
That went up.
Two seventy-two, now she's at two eighty-nine.
Hundred thousand in there, that hundred thousand is in there, and that was for the vanguard. Now, the thing is, if you hadn't signed up or agreed to that vanguard, then that would've been something we could've pulled because.
Hundred fifty-four thousand.
You guys did approve the vanguard now, so I'm glad we've got that in there.
I know.
Well, according to her note on the transmittal, it was something about splitting it over three years?
Yes, yes, and that's what we initially talked about, Cindy.
Did you know that before?
The only thing.
That's why, that's why I'm asking, is I don't know.
Okay, do you want that? Art? Okay, do you want that?
Well, the one that we got today, says three hundred and forty-three on social security. And I printed the one, the last one out that she sent us.
On the old sheet, it was two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, on the new sheet, it's two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. That's an increase of.
Well, even if they were in here.
Not sixty, but eleven.
That's a big.
Comic core math, sorry. But it did incre- it's the only one that increased.
I mean, if you increase your, when it's new, it should show higher because we have higher wages.
The wages didn't go down.
No. Travis is okay.
This, Jamie, this thing is showing, this thing is.
Page six.
Page six, I very knew it's.
Page six off the.
This one does.
This one, Cindy. At that number, where did you see that?
You're going.
The old.
From our old sheet, two seventy-two.
But we're, I know that on this, it was four hundred, it wasn't. That's what I was wanting to see.
That's just one.
It wasn't, it didn't match up to that either, that's why I had it on first because it didn't match. Right.
That's a big.
You'll find a, a useful.
So on page six, I got a question about social, social security.
Yes.
Second, we were at four ninety-seven, now we're down to three forty-three.
Right, and I think what happened there is we switched it on this sheet, but now it's different on the new sheet. Between all the different, like general fund, you got the county road, you mail for the, you should, service. But she said she put them in the officer, you got the weed board, we're all separate, that was. And like I said, when I did that preliminary, it was, uh, an estimate, but now we went in and we got precise. The preliminary always went a little higher. Cause it's different on this one, so with the numbers.
Right.
Four ninety-seven before.
Yeah, that's.
And that was.
That one had included all the social security from the general fund and from everyone else.
Yes, because we did an estimate.
In this new one with the three forty-three, it's only the general fund amount, the other funds.
Yeah, because we sat down and we separated everything out.
Well, and then, okay.
Clarifying, if that's what you were saying.
Yes.
Stay on that. To Jamie's point, then how did the clerk of court go down? It should've went up. That's, I'm not picking on, this is the first one, first one on the line item here. I'm not, not picking on the clerk of court, it just happens to be the first one. I mean, I could say auditor. The clerk of court went from one ninety to one seventy-two, so if you added social security in, took it out of the general and put it into there, wouldn't that go up? Wouldn't that go up? It went down.
The clerk of court is in the general fund now.
The first one that you guys got, the salaries only had a dollar included in each one, only grandness. The fifty cents was not included in each department, it was included at the bottom as a whole.
But, and that's not what was set off the initial budget meeting, she said you did a dollar fifty.
This, this is one that I, the last one that I got emailed to me that I got printed out. No, this is the one, the last one that I got emailed to.
Yes.
And on there.
The nine nineteen one.
It shows the clerk of court at one ninety. It shows social security at four ninety-seven. Now you're saying you took the social security out
Yeah, and this.
And put it into each department.
Those has one ninety, ones has one ninety-six.
The, 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 uh, these departments like clerk of court are already in the general fund. They don't have their own special account like the road department does and stuff, so, so they, they, they would not have social security put back into theirs, cause.
Right, the only thing is, is their wages for dollars, plus their expenses, plus we, the phone thing.
But like, when I went through these transmittals, you did have one ninety-six, six sixty-two written on it, which is in the colored copy from nine nineteen, but not the black and white copy from nine nineteen, and it's different than our colored copy for today.
Okay, well, I'm telling you, today is your accurate numbers for what you guys requested. And we went through it line by line yesterday and we took out, so everything's separated now. Like the retirement county share is in that red, that's separated out for general fund, also in the other compartments. And it's supposed to be health insurance, we went in there, figured that out, so we got an accurate number, same as social security. As, as our motions were made on the twenty-ninth, we went through it line by line. So these are your accurate numbers. Comparing it to the others, you know.
But how can we not compare to the others when that's all we've had, Carmen? That's what I'm saying is frustrating, is I'm looking at the transmittals that you gave us, looking at the copies we've been told to use, now there's a new copy, I understand you guys worked on it, thank you.
You made motions, Jamie, and you gave me specifics, so now, we took the time, we got specifics. So now you've got more accurate numbers of what you're looking at for expenses for the coming year, for the departments, that's what this is.
All we did was make official motions on things that you said you had already put in there.
Yeah, but I told you, they were estimates too, and they, I bulked them together so we could get an idea. And now I got directions, we took the time, these numbers are accurate. And it's a budget, Jamie, it's not, you know, I just think that we did good. I think they're as accurate as we can get them for a budget.
And I appreciate the work you guys have put into it, but it, we have a lot of copies and none of them match and none of them match the transmittals.
I would say throw all the old copies away, this is where we're sitting right now.
Okay.
No, seriously.
I got a question for you, come over if you wouldn't mind.
And we can pull the.
Going back to.
The salary sheet too, there's some things.
We took that one seventy-two, uh, now we have it transferred out of here, so how does that affect over here?
Marcy is full-time, works more than Cassie.
That gonna change that?
It's, it was less then.
Okay, in the salary sheet, you use the new one, the one I gave you today.
This is, and it's still incorrect, it has Marcy and Cassie, I would assume that works.
No, 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 Marcy is twenty-eighty and Cassie is correct.
Marcy gets paid more than Cassie, works more than Cassie, but her final over here for her wage is five thousand dollars less.
Transfers in the, that was in the.
Maybe it's just a typo.
No, you're right. No, we're working on, we just looked at that.
Cause I remember we, we took that out.
Yeah, I know, but I don't know what page we're.
She's got her computer on, cause that, oh my gosh, we corrected it and then it keeps flipping back. And I know Marcy's, Cassie's supposed to be fourteen hundred hours and then Marcy's.
It should've been one of the very first pages.
Very first one.
I don't know what it is.
We have to correct it. Um, not that one.
Was it the bat we didn't go, follow through when?
I wrote on it.
And I haven't heard of my copy, it's out there yet, I think, so I can't.
I was just wondering how's that gonna affect.
It's writing white.
Take that audible, we were talking about it, now is it gonna affect something else? You know what I'm saying.
The columns are the same number. On this, on the one that's printed.
Sheet that we have.
Yeah, the one you, I printed out. So looking at Marcy's.
We were looking at, uh, was it the special fund? That was a vehicle, special vehicle.
No, it was the sheriff's, it's general fund.
General fund.
Get your copy for a second, Travis. We'll try not to.
Keep it clipped.
Right. I know it looks madness, but I have my organization. Right.
No, it was on, uh. It was on, uh. We started with the forty-seven thousand.
It was on special vehicle.
Special vehicle. I can think of. We're, yeah, we need that one. Special vehicle, one of the most. Can you turn to, you looked at this? Okay, now we took this out. Okay, how does that affect over here? What's up? Sitting here and transferred out, so it's gonna change.
If, okay, so.
This.
This. This still stays here because it needs to go over here. So this is, this hundred and seventy-two thousand twenty.
Twelve, that's forty.
Goes here. It's not a transfer and it's revenue, right?
It's still gonna go up here as, as. Old twenty, and we're gonna come down to that.
So this whole one seventy-two twenty is included in this revenue. It's included here.
So this number goes back to the same.
This number now goes to the one eighty-two, one twenty, that was on that. So this is one eighty-two.
But we don't know.
This is sixty-two, one twenty, so you've got it there. So if you take this transfer from here.
Yep.
Put it up here, you have these three together, you get that.
And which, which one? Yeah, come up to that. And then you put these together and it comes to. Comes to that.
See what happens, is you add this and this, forty-seven, two thirteen, and the one eighty is the two twenty.
These, when you, when you had all these three.
This is.
One, yeah, two, one, seven, one eighty, that's one eighty-one plus two, two twenty, two thirty, yeah, it's gonna be right there. So that's when we take that out, that's why I said, how does it affect it over there? But.
It doesn't, because this goes, instead of going here.
It goes, it's an estimate up here, it should've been up here. Cause this is.
And it is, it's right here, if you add these together, it's this one seventy-two zero.
Okay, one sixty, one seventy, one seventy-one.
Well.
It's one seventy-one.
What?
One zero, two zero. Oh. This is, this is.
Cause it's.
Yeah, one thousand dollars off. Yes, this, this goes to here. And then it computes down through here, and when you get all of them, we're gonna have the special left.
Still come up one hundred thousand difference.
That's the thing.
This.
So this will be one eighty-one.
Okay, and the social security county. Do you have my sheets on?
I went, I went, I went to the department and this is. And on the salaries, the salaries, salaries went up this amount.
So in the social security account. Carmen, do you remember what number did the social security account numbers?
Did you get your question answered?
Yes. Okay, oh, there's any. But, no, it was on this one. This is why this looks different.
I want software to get rid of all this paper. I wanna go paperless. This is ludicrous.
We got transfers out of one seventy-two, that comes here, that is, um.
Yeah, I got those on my.
Yeah, that comes out. They look like over.
I forgot, these are two pages too.
They're showing a deficit over here and that was.
Yeah.
I was just wondering how it affected on the other side, because it was showing on this side.
Okay, one of the questions, um, I have. Way back when we did the preliminary, the commission voted to approve sixty thousand for HR, was that ever included? As a line item in this final one? Okay, that was an official motion that should be included in.
I, it wasn't a motion.
Uh, yes, it was.
Okay, well, I didn't have a motion. What meaning did you say?
I made the motion, I, I think it was actually for sixty-five.
Sixty-five wasn't a motion. Wasn't in the minutes. No, you guys didn't make a motion.
Yeah, yeah, we did.
Discuss it again later.
Yeah.
Well, at least let me go get the minutes and I'll show you what was in the minutes.
Well, we can, we can do it again.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you want to, you made your motion, right?
Yep.
You wanna do it again?
Sure, I made a motion to include sixty-five, sorry.
No, I can't say it.
Sixty-five thousand dollars in our budget for HR. Okay, position.
We're out on the budget, general.
Okay, motion by Eliza to have sixty-five thousand dollars in the budget in the general fund for HR, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jamie. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? In the general fund, yep. Any discussion? Seeing none. Eliza?
I'm.
Jamie?
I'm.
Rick? Jean?
Name.
I'll vote I. That motion passes. We had requests by Mercer County Economic Development. Do we wanna include anything as an allocation in the general fund for them? They were requesting four mills. That's approximately two hundred and seventeen thousand. I think that's a little high. I think based on the report, they were generating like seventy-six thousand under their current lease. They also mentioned that that's still in negotiation. We don't know where that's been. That's been in negotiation for a year. But is there a thought or a dollar amount to allocate for Mercer County Economic Development?
Thoughts? Question. Have we given them money in the past?
Not that I'm aware of, but they've been self-sufficient for over fifteen years, so.
Thank you. They used to charge the county an annual.
Whatever, it was like ten thousand, so whatever that was for.
That was the dues that they were talking about. Thirteen, or I mean, twenty thirteen, but yeah, they had preliminary. Right, but if we did an allocation, then they wouldn't ask us for dues. Fair board used to be a male levy, they're an allocation. They're in the, you know, fair board's in the budget. Just thought process. I mean, we've talked a little bit about various functions. You know, they write grants or help assist writing grants. You know, if there was specific rest, uh, requests that the commission had or other entities that, you know, that would definitely be the. Entity that we would task with, you know, possibly getting us grants. As far as planning stuff, I had initially requested money in planning and zoning for comprehensive land use plan. And also for ordinance writing as far as it pertains to building permits within the county. Those are other things I'd like to see in there. So I'm just trying to get some of those things that we've talked about in the past, get a decision on it, whether we're gonna put it in the budget this year or not. So. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on a dollar amount?
I was just quickly trying to see if I could find anything, but I couldn't. I don't know. Maximum allocation that a county can make to an organization.
And that would definitely have to be reviewed. I know we talked about that earlier in the meeting. Allocation to fair boards a little over sixty thousand, so we're reallocating to one entity in that neighborhood. I'm just looking for thoughts.
Well, do we have room in our budget right now to do that?
Well, based on the preliminary numbers and where we're sitting at now, as far as the general budget, we're. Six hundred thousand below the preliminary, based on this summary sheet, of which on page six, no, page. Page three. We have the appropriation number on the top. We have a cash reserve that's at twenty-five percent, which is that one point nine million dollars. We have money in four percent reserve for delinquent tax collections. That wasn't in the preliminary, but it's in this one of eighty-nine thousand. So, basing what we're planning on levying in line nine, we're at two point three-three million. Of which has that reserve, and I know we need a reserve for, because everything is kind of an estimate, but. I could see some allocations earmarked and either reduce the reserve or increase the.
Well, we never talked about the reserve, so.
If you take your, you know, the, what we started with in the general fund minus where we're at right now, we got about five hundred and seventy-four thousand. And then you're not touching reserve and you're not touching the interest or that four percent, cause that's what we're gonna not take in. You know what I mean? It, so then that way we'd be safe if you could keep it within, whatever you wanna do within that. And I just need a motion. But if you guys could keep it within that, then we would be safe and then have the extra reserve that we need just in case. So that's all I'm asking.
And all I was stating was, is there room? In my opinion, yes, but we.
As long as we can, I, I would go along with, as long as we can, we have room for additional, some spot adjustment on some of these lower end wages.
And, and the thing about this is that this is what we're gonna, if we don't make any changes, this is what we're gonna tax at. So this is what's gonna generate our revenues. Even if we don't make it as part of the final budget, you know, if we decide to do allocations after the budget's approved.
We can still do that.
We can still do that at the general fund.
But if you make allocations right now, then that, you know, this is what you're raising, but it isn't over, you know, our preliminary.
Right.
But I think that if you approve it at that, then you'll be losing that. Like you said, you had sixty-five for HR, you made a motion. So whatever else you guys want, if you guys know, I would rather have to make a motion so we can include it. And then that way, you still have that.
Right, no, that's not where I'm thinking, but I don't know what somebody else is.
What was the general fund levy number?
Okay, it's like. And, and we're looking at the, the amount. The general fund is at page five. If you look at the, general fund's the first one. And we're looking at the amounts. So what I'm doing is looking at the preliminary budget we approved. The one we gotta watch in the general fund is two point nine. That's, we can't, we have to stay under that. And right now, we're at two point three. Okay, but if you take those numbers.
The red number to the left.
Subtract them. You're looking at about five hundred thousand, but here's the thing too.
I, I, I understand everything. I just need to know what the number difference.
Yeah.
So we're sort of gonna work on wages, when we come back to this?
We can do it in whatever order I just was bringing it up for discussion. So if you wanna talk wages, we can talk wages.
I'd rather go back to, I would like to get that.
Where were we at? What were, what was your question there Travis?
Was just MICA, because they were in today. If we wanted to allocate anything. Rick wanted to talk a little bit about wages to see what that would done.
We have five hundred thousand dollars for the wage, right?
Yeah, but what you guys do, I'd like us to have a chance to put it in the budget and show you before you ask.
Right.
Well, there's just questions all over the place. I even have. Just, for instance, on the general fund under cash reserve, right now it was twenty-five percent is on the. Preliminary budget. And we didn't even discuss that. Where, where's the twenty-five percent come from? Who decided the twenty-five percent? Is there a recommended percentage? Last year it was fifteen percent.
When we talked to Linda, she was, well, you know, legally we can have up to seventy-five percent, but she thought twenty-five percent was safe. It's where you wanna end up at the end of the year is what decides that number. So. Twenty-five percent, so that we're looking at that. But if you wanna change it, you can change it, lower it.
Did Linda see the final?
What's that?
Like finished product? Did Linda, like say the whole time, see the whole finished product start to finish or no?
Basically, yeah, well, the thing she said is make sure you reserve for the taxes. And what we did is Don looked at what, you know, we get like four percent, we don't get that, so that is something you wanna always put in there. Whatever, kinda watch it over the years and whatever percentage you don't get. So, Don was saying, it's about four percent we average, we don't get in. So we wanna do that. That'll protect us and make sure we're getting the mill that we're supposed to. Now the, like Linda just said, that that reserve is what you wanna end up at the end. And the reserve is for something, is something were to happen, disaster, whatever, that's our push.
Preliminary was twelve percent.
There's our test.
Okay.
She's a busy lady too.
Right, yeah.
So, what, I wanna start knocking things out so we can get.
Get moving.
Get moving. So, what, what do we wanna tackle first?
Wages.
Wages, okay. So across the board, we did a dollar fifty. You've had discussion where you wanna change certain individuals, increase a step adjustment, basically, right?
I'm gonna ask for, I'm gonna ask for Jamie to help me on this one with, explain it more to step three on down. We were looking at two dollars an hour. Spot adjustment?
Yeah.
Is that in addition to the dollar fifty?
Correct.
Um, step. Three or less increase two dollars an hour.
Okay, step three or less, two dollars an hour.
The wage study, years of service not playing any factor in it, I had no right, the years of service didn't go where I thought it would go. It's just based off of the wage study that's been.
That I sent out. Okay.
Well, with the addition of, some of the wages were not correct on there, but yes.
Can I get a copy of what you're looking at and then that way?
Of which one?
Whatever one you guys are looking at, step three or less. What did you?
I gotta find it.
Okay, if you find it, give us a copy and we can work from that.
It's the one that you sent out, I guess.
Okay, and if that's the one I've got.
But there was some individuals on there that their wages were not correct.
Okay.
And they were correct, not even correct from, I'm assuming it's an Excel issue, but they were not correct from even the original wage study. But I think you said you found it in the office, so.
This is, this is yours.
Find what you're working off of Jamie and then.
I don't need more.
Cause I wanna, I wanna be on the right. Okay, step three or less.
That was gonna be my question Jamie is.
I know, but I'm saying it's more in this purpose, maybe it's best just to say these people. Or not? Is that not?
Oh, that's another.
I don't know, I wasn't, but I didn't know we were going here too, so I.
Is that across?
None. Nope.
Just know that there's twenty-three employees that are step three or less.
So you got twenty-three employees?
Yes.
Let's do it generic. Twenty-three employees times how much an hour?
Two.
Two? Times twenty-eighty, all the full-time employees?
No, well, yes, but not, they don't all work off of the twenty-eighty.
Okay, budget, budget wise?
Budget, I think when I did the numbers, I had done it high at the twenty-two, twenty-three, cause that's the highest, or the twenty-four, forty-eighty, excuse me.
We did twenty-two, twenty, I think that's what the number for.
Is that what you did, twenty-two, twenty-three?
As a yearly number.
So you're talking about a ninety-five, ninety-five to ninety-six thousand.
I come roughly, I remember it's roughly about a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, just under a hundred thousand dollars.
Any answers? Nevermind, that's us, the twenty-three employees in steps one, two, and three would get.
Or negative one, some are negative one, yeah.
But these are the three, step three or below, would get a two dollar in our wage increase. And step four and above employees would get a dollar fifty an hour.
We're just having such a hard time, hard time getting help or gaining help and it's like. Correct.
And if you're not prepared today to do individuals, at least let's put the amount of dollar amount in the budget. Which, when we talk wages, it's not just wages, it's retirement, it's benefits, so.
Cause it's gonna affect the FICA.
Yeah, we did a hundred and seventy-one, so that's the twenty-two, twenty-three is what I.
Do you have a sheet or a?
I have.
Document that shows what step each employee is in?
Yeah, it was, yes, it was emailed out. I can remake the copy, but it was emailed from Furman.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to get.
I can't find it in my pile.
Yeah, I don't think I have it in mine either, but what I'm getting at as far as the budget goes, if we wanna allocate. I'm just shooting, cause I know it's approximately a hundred thousand if we budget, I don't know, a hundred and thirty thousand, a hundred and forty thousand for additional raises.
Would that cover your taxes and your?
Uh, that I'm kind of.
I mean.
I'm estimating.
And, and retirements. What, another twenty-five percent?
FICA is, anybody know FICA off the top? Is it seven point six-five or six-two-five?
Eight percent I figured, with eight thousand dollars.
Point zero seven?
Six-five. So this is seven point six-five. Percent.
You guys are all comfortable with the dollar and a half across the board raise for everybody?
Yeah.
Cause I seen that was motion, so it wouldn't even pay for me to change something differently.
And it was four to nothing on that one.
Pardon?
It was four to nothing, four in favor, so. But anyway, retirement would be another. Like fifteen?
Thirteen, fifteen? So you're looking at.
Thirteen percent and then.
Medicare is three something. I'm gonna do twenty-five percent.
And some of the quick figures of what I went off of is like Ken.
Yeah.
Ken has proposed kind of some.
It comes out to about one-twenty, so one-thirty that I was estimating is not far off.
I was using Ken's sheets, Rick's sheets, the wage study that was. The original one from twenty-sixteen and then kind of the most recent one I think was one-one.
So we don't have to have that specifics on it today. We could just say we want this money put in there so that we can look at that.
Yeah.
The only, the way I'm, why I'm scrambling here to find that. Step one, two, three, four, five sheet is, you're proposing a two dollar raise for everyone in steps one and two. Does, and, pardon? One and two and three. Those numbers are insignificant to what my point is going to be. That if you give step three a two dollar pay raise, that they're not above step four now.
Well, with their dollar fifty, they'd be about even. Yeah, that's, there was a lot of not perfect signs to any of it.
I know what you're getting at, but.
Cause now suddenly I'm making more than Travis, you know, was making.
Currently our new hires, what we're having to hire in at are making the same as some of our step.
My whole.
Bump-up sheet from Terry. And that covered that bump-up sheet I got from you.
Yeah.
Okay, that was separate?
No, her approach would fix the same. She's going after the same problem.
And it was the same, like I used the sheet from Terry, I used the sheet that Ken had put together.
Cause what I need is, like what your sheet was, so that's specific.
Yeah, the specific dollar amount I was looking at is.
Just the one to fourteen for the rest of this year.
Right, and I saw that and then plus.
The budget, besides what you guys are looking at for the year, if you did a map, it'd be around what, fifty-six?
Some, yeah. And I, like, I started with specific people, I started with the years of service you gave me. I wasn't going anywhere, then Rick got these sheets from Ken and Terry. Kind of spearheaded it. It was more of looking at what we're hiring new people in at, as Ken's got positions open, Terry's got positions open, the landfill's got positions open. And what some of our people that have been here eight, nine, ten years and they're making the same. So it was just, and I used, yeah, the wage study that we, I can't find these figure right now, but you emailed it.
What I would like to see is, like what I got from you guys. You have specific, what you feel you need in your, and I'd like to see it from every department with your employees.
And that's.
Where you're at and what they wanna bump up.
That's another thing, maybe we just need to leave it to. And maybe we just need to leave it to departments, but. But we still need to have. But we still need to have the money set aside.
Yeah. So basically, budget-wise, we just need, if we're gonna go down that road, let's set aside X number of dollars. Then we can get to an approved budget?
I'm gonna make, I'd make a motion to put a hundred and thirty thousand dollars set aside in our, in general budget for our wages.
Okay, motion by Rick to set aside a hundred and thirty thousand dollars within the general budget to address additional raises. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Eliza. Any discussion?
Well, my, my discussion, and it's got to do with wages, but, is, I've, when I'm looking at these wages, for instance, in the road department, I feel an operator should be an operator and that wages should be all the same. Same as when I look in, say, the sheriff's department, the, am I gonna say this right? Jailers?
Correctional officers.
Correctional officers? Should all be the same. It shouldn't matter, you know, maybe.
The difference is what raises they get each year makes their wages different.
Pardon?
Because each year we give different raises throughout the county and stuff like that. So sometimes if you have somebody there who's been five years, theirs is gonna be different because they've got those raises within those years. But if you have somebody that's three, they only got three of the year's raises, not all five years raises.
But in the end, after I've been here, say, five years, I should be making the same as any other person in that same position. Let me put it that way.
That's the, that's the mine implant mentality. And I don't disagree with you, I'm just saying, but Gwen, you had a question? Yeah.
So that motion that Linda just made, that sixty-five thousand, is that including benefits? Or is benefits in addition to that sixty-five thousand?
In addition, I would need benefits in addition. That would just be the salary, not the benefits.
Okay, I just need to know.
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion on the hundred and thirty thousand dollars?
The only thing I'm just gonna say is like, like, for Jean's question is, is that however we got, we can go back at another date and go through all this and plug those numbers in where we want them, how we want them. We can move it around, but we got a hundred and thirty thousand dollars that we can work with. Basically, what it amounts to.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none? Rick?
Aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes. Okay. We've talked HR, we've talked wages, is there any other?
Do you want to go back to MEC Ed?
Yeah.
Is there a number anybody's interested in? I don't know what number to look at. You want to start with discussion first, or?
Well, I'd throw a number out.
Just for, throwing a number out, I thought we could do fifty thousand.
You gonna make that a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
To an allocation of.
To MEC Ed.
For fifty thousand.
Okay.
That would get us up to.
Motion by Rick to have an allocation for MEC Ed to fifty thousand. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jean. Any discussion?
If anybody's uncomfortable or don't want to do it, they should, if we're just throwing it out there, get started. Tell me what you think.
I'm just sorry to shoot it out at a.
If you want a less number, whatever you want to do.
I don't know.
Or don't want to do anything. I just wanted to get the ball rolling here.
So basically, if we put fifty thousand in the budget to be an allocation, that allocation can be adjusted at a later date. It's just, when we look at the budget, you got your reserve, you got a few other things. It's, it's a fluid thing.
I just still kind of go back to, and I know the JDA and MEC Ed are different, but like, if you live in Stanton, are you now having paid tax dollars on this allocation and on a JDA?
It's part of the general fund, so yes.
Essentially, I mean, that's the only.
And, and I just go back to my original, when, when they were here, is I think it should be left up to the taxpayers of the county.
Right.
As to what they want to do.
I'm not disagreeing that maybe it's needed to stay in the county, but it, I don't know.
Do you want to take public comments since they don't work earlier today on this issue? Or is this still closed on public hearing on budget?
Well, it's not a public hearing, but come on up and we'll hear you.
Looking at their sheet, they were saying, um, high, um, gasoline, so for natural gas. What good does that do all the propane suppliers if you take all of them guys on business? What good does it do people that's out, fixing Stanton to have housing development and daycare built in Hayes, which is all part of the study and or that money for? So where's the benefit to everybody in Allen, for two cities to get all this money? Especially fifty thousand with no checks and balances?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion for fifty thousand dollar allocation budgeted for MEC Ed? Any other discussion? Yeah.
If I could make a quick comment on that. I do have some economic development experience in my background, too. It is very important that these studies be made, and if you folks could tailor the allocations to specific items, maybe that would make some folks feel a little more comfortable with it. But, yeah, I mean, if you need some studies on railways and so forth, that's a very important aspect of, you know, moving forward with some progressive and beneficial projects in our balance.
Then that's a, that's, that's a great comment. I mean, as far as the allocation, we could definitely make conditions on how that's.
Thing about it, too, is like, we had talked earlier, I brought it up earlier about looking at, I want to look at their books rather than just a free-for-all, you know? I just want to hand them fifty thousand and, and go have a party, you know? I, I don't want to do that. But I'm not saying that, my other part of this discussion yet, too, is I don't know if everybody's comfortable with fifty thousand. If you want to look at a lesser number or something, please say so. I just wanted to do is open the ball, so.
Well, it's, it's a good place to start. So we're just trying to.
So can we say, we would, if this goes through, can we say we agree to this allocation, but it will have contingencies with it? As far as we want to see.
Yeah, so typically, like, allocations or certain budget things, I don't know if counties always done it, but I've been in other situations where somebody was budgeted an allocation, but they had to come to the commission and state, this is what we're planning on using it for. We would like you to allocate that. They'd have to prior approval. And at this point, we're just putting it in the budget. And when we look at budget stuff, it's no different than when a department comes and says, hey, we need to repair a ten thousand dollar issue. We need authorization from you to get a PO. You know, we know what it's going to be spent for.
But then you're, but then they're not an independent organization anymore, because if you make that comparison, let's use the Fair Board, we give them an allocation. We don't tell them what they can and can't spend it on, nor do we, pardon?
Disagree on that one. The states, the statute tells us what we can spend it on. There are, there are limitations there. Well, the century code says what that can be spent on.
I agree with that, but it doesn't come before the commission for us to okay. If you're gonna pour concrete or put in a post or buy a gate or. And basically, the way I'm understanding this right now is that that's what you would be requiring of MEC Ed if we give them an allocation.
Right. And, and I mean, as far as MEC Ed is positioned, there is a portfolio person from the commission that's a voting.